Good evening, this is our March 29th workshop meeting. We have business to attend to later in the evening, but for this portion, I would like to make a motion to enter executive session to discuss work history of employees. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Six. And we're going into executive session.
One tries to like.
Hi, good evening Cold Spring, we have a bunch of folks joining us online. This is our March 29th workshop.
I'm at all.
Oh. Hang on. We got Charlotte and John back, now we're getting everybody else in. Alright, now we have everybody. In. Yeah. Run by this way. Okay, oh, I forgot Glenn was joining us. Via Zoom, sorry about that, good evening everyone, thank you for being patient, we had a an executive session prior. Thank you for being patient while we finished up and came to join you. It's our Wednesday, March 29th workshop, we have. First on our agenda, an opportunity to request a vote to add or modify agenda items, any requests?
I have one.
Yes.
I would just like to give a little update on the tree pit garden committees planning. They want to propose a mulch, a volunteer mulch day for the Main Street tree pits on April 11.
Well, let's, let's put that down at the end of the agenda and we'll first. Eliza has made a motion with someone like the second adding that.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
I.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay. Announcements, lawn, lawn and weed pickup starts soon in April?
I believe it's April 13th, I have to double check.
In two weeks.
On the website, so get a.
Get ready for that, also, we have hydrant flushing coming up the first weekend, the first week in April. We are going to the water and wastewater superintendent is going to keep us apprised of where they are in process so that folks on streets around the affected hydrants know to expect low pressure and potentially some discoloration. Avoid laundry at those times, hi Irene. So watch our website, email blast and social media for updates on that. One, a happy announcement, I had a meeting today with the DEP and contact the selected contractor for. I'm gonna move aside on my, Irene doesn't have a whole wall of backstory. The selected contractor for the Catskill Aqueduct. Today was our pre-construction meeting where we were looking at timeline, et cetera. We will have an updated sheet based on feedback. Within the next day and then we'll be making public announcements from there, but it looks as if the work will begin as early as April 10. So we'll have updates on that as well. Okay, anyone else have announcements? Eliza? Okay, so now we'll move on to what I think probably a lot of folks have joined for, the presentation by Jewel. Glenn Weinberg is here representing Jewel related to the CCA, welcome Glenn. Glenn, are you there?
Yeah.
There you are.
Yes, I'm here, yes, just searching for the new friend, hi guys, thanks for having me back.
Hello.
Hey.
So.
So. Sorry, go ahead.
So you're going to to bring us the public up to speed on on the RFP that that was put forward and tonight we are being asked to make a couple of decisions, so can you talk us through? That and we will.
Absolutely.
Public comment as well.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely, I am going to do, I'm having already some internet instability, so I'm just gonna kill my video and see if that helps. And hopefully it'll stay a little bit, my bandwidth will be a little bit better. So, yes, as Mayor fully said, we are in the midst of a decision period that I spoke at the last week's meeting about. Which is the, the, the decision in front of the village tonight is to, is first to, to move forward with an MOU. Which is really a pre-approval for a couple of important specs of the, of the CCA RFP and contracting process, namely, the ESA, which is the electricity supply agreement, the primary contract for the program, which is a tri-party contract between the village, Jewel as the program manager and the eventual awarded supplier. And it also pre-approves the pricing benchmarks. Which are listed in the MOU and have gone out with that RFP, which suppliers must be in order to be considered compliant. So we have received indicative pricing as of the 21st of March, along with the, the general proposals and other requirements of the RFP from each of the three qualified bidders from whom we, we received proposals. And that indicative pricing as suggesting that we will be considerably under between 20 and 25% below those established pricing benchmarks. The other piece of the MOU really is about the municipality indicating their preferences. And those preferences are real, there's really two questions to answer tonight. One is rate type fixed versus variable, we talked a little bit last time about the, the sort of merits of, of each, so I, I maybe will. We'll skip that piece in case there are, unless there are specific questions to dig back into that. But I can say, I can give an update that since last week, we've received now nearly all the MOUs with the deadline being tomorrow afternoon, so I can say that all of the MOUs that we have received to date have been.
From other municipalities.
Indicated from other municipalities, yes, from other municipalities in the group of 13 Hudson Valley municipalities that are collaborating on this RFP, that's not to say that they are dependent on each other or committed to one another in any way, but just to say that they are together for the sake of the RFP to get as best a price as they can, so the, the volume, the aggregated volume and buying power that's represented across all of the municipalities is, is significant. So, and consensus is also. You know, supports that, so to.
So can I, can I ask you to pause?
There has been consensus, sure.
Okay. How can you put it to numbers to that, how many municipalities you are currently working with? And what percent of them have already made their decision and what decision was?
Yeah, so all. All, so 10 of the 13, there's three that are, that are meeting tonight, including the Village of Cold Spring, 10 of the 13 have made their decision, all have indicated a, a preference for fixed. It is split however. Um, I. It's not, I, I don't believe it's quite 50/50, it might be sort of six-four split, split on the, on the supply default preference between blended, which is a 50% renewable product and the 100%.
And.
Product.
May I?
And that does not dilute, I should just say that, sure.
Sorry, we, we're having real connectivity issues, I'm sorry that I keep interrupting you.
No, I think it's my delay, I'm, I'm sure it's my delay on my connection and I. And. Try to improve it in just a second, but I, I just to say that the, that does not dilute, the fact that the municipalities are split on the indication of default does not, does not dilute the buying power, so as long as everybody is with the same bidder. Choosing different defaults across those different, those three options does not negatively impact the group in any way, so all of that is good and it's good that there's so far.
What I'd like to be clear on is a what-if scenario. So if tonight, the village agrees to pre-approve, to, to enter the memorandum of understanding with the pre-approved pricing branch benchmarks and then chooses either a different rate type or a different blend. And we're the only ones who make that choice, what hap, what happens then?
Well, the blend, like I said, the blend will not impact you, so it's only the, the, am I losing you?
No.
Give me one, give me one second, let me.
I just need to hear it a different way to understand sometimes, so I'm asking you, realize you've addressed this, but I'm asking you again to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, sure, sure, I just wanna, yeah, I just wanna make sure because it's telling me my connection is no good. The blend, the, the blend, the, the variation on blend does not impact the pricing whatsoever, so if the village were the only one, for instance, to choose the standard default, that would not, that would not have any impact whatsoever. If you were to choose the variable however, because there is now a large consensus around fixed, then that's not to say that you shouldn't, but it is to. It, it is just to say that because there will be, there will be relatively small amount of power on the variable side that may impact their pricing when, in the, in the, the final analysis, when they do their final calculation. If there's only a very small amount of the, the demand that they're bidding on, that may have an impact. So that is a consideration, you know, again, that's not to say it should influence your decision, but it is the case that if the, if all but one municipality has consensus around a fixed price, you know, they, they will of course get the benefit of, of that, that group buy more so than the variable municipality, but if that's what you're asking.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go for it.
So, but that would not prevent the municipality per se from taking that route? If they're part of the CCA, then they could still do variable and the regular supply. They just would get maybe not as good of a deal, is that what you're saying Glenn?
Yes, thanks, absolutely, you can still do it and, and there are, I say of the remaining municipalities that have not yet signed their MOU, there are, there is a municipality there that is seriously considering variable. So it's not to say that it will be a clean sweep across the board. Or for fixed, but you know, yeah, you just want, you know, you just want as much information as you can have when making your decision. And you know, the, just to be aware that you know, if a, if a supplier is only bidding on one out of 13, they may price it differently than if they're bidding on all 13, you know, or 12 out of 13. So, you know, and that is the, that is of course the function of this process, which is to make sure that we get you know, that every, that, that everybody indicates what they'd like to, what they'd like to, you know, see their final bid, bids on and that the suppliers are able to have, you know, visibility into that as well. Otherwise, they're not able to adjust their pricing properly, so. Is that, does that make sense?
Yeah. Then do we also choose the term or will, will that be selected based on the lowest, the lowest price?
Yeah, right, right now, we don't need to.
The number of months for fixed.
Yeah, we don't need to decide term tonight. Term, you know, when we get final pricing, we will make a jewel, will make a recommendation around term, not just bitter, but also term based on where we see the greatest value. You know, and I'll say that the feedback that I've received and, and also your feedback, right? So the feedback that I've received, I would say, could be summarized as 36 months is feeling like a little bit too long for folks this time around, 12 months is feeling a little bit too short. 24 months seems to be the, the kind of sweet spot there, if the pricing sort of echoes that, that will likely be our recommendation on the day, but I don't want to predetermine anything there because pricing has surprised me before. So, but, and we do, we don't have to, to let them know. Now, we're only, we're only asking you to make an indication of the things that we must disclose to the suppliers at this point. Everything else we can leave until the, to the fourth to make a final decision.
Well, no, just, can I maybe, maybe I can just say again, also because I think we have public who weren't here when we were talking through this.
Yes.
Last week, just again, kind of what the, what our decision is. So our decision is whether to again, join the CCA under new conditions with this other group of municipalities and we have, so choice number one is do we, do we join again? And then if we do join, what are, what kind of program do we want? And we have the choice of the kind of energy supply, so we can choose conventional, which is fossil fuel. We can choose 100% renewable from New York. Or we can choose the, what they call blend, which is 50% New York renewable and then 50% renewable from other places that doesn't come with renewable credits. So that's one decision and, and whatever we choose is the default, but then people can, then residents can opt into one of the other ones. When they look at the prices, they could say, actually, I don't want your default, I want to choose a different one.
At an individual basis.
An individual.
And at any time, anytime.
Yeah, and at any time, and then, and then.
Question about that, is it better to poke in with a question or?
Why don't we let Laura finish and then we'll, we'll definitely gonna open to questions. And then we're choosing whether we want a fixed rate, so that's what we've had in the past, which is one constant rate for supply for two years, something like that, we know what it is. Or we have one variable, which is every four months it'll change, but it will be below a certain benchmark. And whatever we decide. Residents will have a very clear process, they'll get a letter saying here are all the different ways you can opt out and go back to Central Hudson.
Or a different iteration of the CCA.
Yeah, whatever they want.
For the 50/50. What is the benefit of that versus going 100%?
It'll likely less expensive.
Better read.
Got it, yeah. And what Glenn explained to us last week is that the, and I'm not, I'm gonna butcher this Glenn, but like for the layman, I think this kind of does the job of like, there are renewable credits that, and New York is very stringent about what they recognize. So they'll recognize these ones from New York. And they're not gonna recognize the ones that are from somewhere else in the US. But it doesn't mean that that electricity isn't clean, it is also renewable energy, but it's produced somewhere else.
I, I think about it as the champagne from the champagne region versus sparkling wine from a different. Well, I mean, that's.
What brand are you thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to use that one.
You have to put it in terms you can follow, right? If our trustees feel that your questions are addressed, I would like to take some, oh, go ahead Eliza.
Yeah, no, but that's a.
I think Eliza has another question.
Yeah, I, I have one question about the pricing. Not, not on the different sources, but on variable versus fixed rates. My question is. It seems like the past year, the prices have been kind of volatile and crazy and we're looking at prices that are, you know, going down. But we don't really know what the market's gonna do and. So. So I was kind of surprised to hear that all 10 of the municipalities have already, you know, indicated that their preference is fixed. And I'm wondering if I'm just not understanding the benefit of a fixed rate and we saw a great benefit in our first version of the CCA when the rate was fixed and then the market went all crazy. And the prices went through the ceiling and we were paying wildly low prices compared to everybody else. And we don't expect that to happen again, the prices will probably be fixed a bit higher and and we're expecting the market to stabilize, I hope. But, you know, one, one benefit I could see for residents is that they're not gonna see their bills changing rapidly or every four months. You know, whereas if we do the variable, people will see their rates changing every four months. Although with Central Hudson, you might see your rates change every month, but. So, I, I would love to understand a little bit more because I think that, that Jewel also recommended it, that people go with the fixed rate, what, what is the other benefits I'm not understanding?
Sure, so you did pick up on, on the, you know, the stability and the certainty around price, that's, that's always, you know, what I've heard is feedback that I've heard is, look, we're, we're really not trying to, to play the market. We're not trying to, to do this, we're not doing CCA to, to beat the utility per se. We want to get a fair, a, a good, stable, fair price and we're doing this for renewables. Or, or something, you know, some version of that similar sort of sentiment, but I'll also say from a, from market perspective, so. The reason we like fixed right now is because what the forwards are showing us is that the market is, is as we talked about last week and on the webinar, the market is, is, is well off where it was from almost all of 2000, 2022. And even late and very late in the year, it was still quite high and in the last three months, it's, it's spot prices are off a lot, 70 plus percent. Forward markets are off more like 10 to 20%. And what that means is it's a good time to fix if you think that over the course of the, the term of a, a likely term of a CCA contract, so say 24 or even 36 months, that prices are likely not only to stabilize, as you mentioned, but to stabilize and level out at a, at a, at a level that we would be more expecting, which is sort of closer to what it was actually for most of, of 2022, even though there was great volatility. We do expect prices to come back very close to what they were last year. So if you believe that, what, what you would see is that maybe for the first few months of a contract that starts in July, because we expect that prices will persist lower through the summer. Summer is usually a time where, where you see a market correction upwards, but because of the level of reserves around natural gas, we expect that wholesale electricity will stay low through the summer. But we are expecting, they are predicting, we are expecting a, a much colder winter next year. And even if not, the level of demand is expected to go up quickly. So demand has also shrunk in this time period, in part because of a mild winter, but demand has shrunk around in Europe, which means that we're exporting less, which means our reserves are going up. We expect demand to go up, especially in the US. But globally, or. We're gonna see a sharp correction, we could see a sharp price correction back up. And if that happens, we're gonna be very glad that we are fit, that we have fixed at this point. And what those forwards are also telling us and the analysts are telling us is that that is a high-priced environment that's likely to persist through the end of the term of this contract. So I know that's like a lot of information, but what I can say, we expect prices to be low at the start, high at the end, and if that's true, it will be a good time to fix. You'll be, you'll likely to be better off fixing now than to follow that curve with variable. So I hope that, that answered your question, I hope I didn't break up during it.
You didn't, it's, it sounds like it's another layer of insulation, another potential layer of insulation.
It's, it is, and I, it is a layer of insulation and again, I guess the bottom line would be that if the market does as is, as is predicted, it will have been a very good time to fix in the spring of 22, of 23.
Yes, so we do, we have a, a, a large agenda tonight, including budget discussion, so I'd like to open for members of the public while we have Glenn here. If you have any comments or questions, I know Tara had a, go ahead, if you can be in the room and ask your question.
Yeah. I'm, I'm curious.
First name and address for the hook.
Oh, Taravano, 6 Rock Street. And I just wanted to like re, like re-go over what's in the 50%, if we do 50% New York State renewables and 50% out-of-state renewables. Like what's excluded from the, like, does New York accept any, any external credit, is New York certified renewable credit? Or is it just anything that's from outside of New York gets?
Glenn, get the camera.
It, it accepts, it. Accepts, and I, I don't want to be, I, I really don't want to be a nitpicky here, but it's a. Or distinction, a lot of people, so, so they cry, I just wanted to distinguish that only because there are other forms of renewable credits, for instance, from community solar and things that are quite different. So when we talk about these, we're talking about certificates, it's really a label, a renewable energy certificate, which is, you know, a way of accounting for energy purchased, but not necessarily any form of credit per se. But that being said, so they will accept, New York will accept renewables that have been physically delivered from out-of-state into New York, so say a Pennsylvania wind farm. If that power is then scheduled and transmitted over the lines through, over, through the Pennsylvania and into New York and then consumed by a customer in New York State, New York State says that's renewable. But if it's a certificate that you've purchased from a wind farm in Iowa or Texas and that power never reaches to you or a New Yorker, a New Yorker at all, they do not consider that renewable, so that's the distinction.
So it sounds to me like it's fair to say that the certificates don't necessarily lead to a shift in in generation necessarily, like. Anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll think about that, the other, the other thing I just wanted to say is that price, as far as like buying the fixed rate or the variable rate, I can see where people might be a little bit less inclined to get upset if they're, like, if we buy at a fixed rate and other prices drop, they might not notice that so much, whereas if we get on the variable rate and then it, you know, bumps up, then people will, will notice, so. Just for that reason alone, it might make sense to. I would kind of feel like, okay, fixed rate might be better than.
Well, I mean, I, I think that's a, that's a reality and what we've seen in the energy environment for the last two years is the word variability is off-putting, a little bit scary.
Yeah.
Paul, hi, can you state your name and address for the clerk?
Sure, I hope you can hear me. Yeah, it's Paul Thompson at 8 New Street, together with Shamala, my wife. I just, hi, good to see you all. I, I'm following the analogy with drinks, I have to confess, I'm a single malt fan, single malt whiskey, which means for me, the 100% renewable together with the fixed price is certainly the most appealing. I think for a start with a renewable, I, I honestly feel the village needs to play its part in getting the broader US economy to net zero. So I think it's important that the village and the residents get in behind the renewable, 100, 100% renewable option. In terms of why the fixed price, there has been a lot of volatility in the, in the, in the markets over the last two years. While we can anticipate less volatility, we just don't know. You only need another war of Russia move, move its tanks into Azerbaijan or something and things could, that could really rock the apple cart, so. And, and let's face it, we're all used to having fixed rate mortgages unlike our European counterparts, so we're used to variable rate mortgages. So, so we're all very, we and the residents in the village, I think, all very comfortable with having, committing to something. all very comfortable with having, committing to something that has a fixed price. It could well be that in the longer run, we end up paying a little bit more, but we're paying a little bit more to sleep at night without fear that the prices will suddenly bolt up over in, in the near future. So just to reiterate, I like the one hundred percent renewable option. I like the, the fixed price, fixed price pricing option. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public in the room or online? Okay. Thank you. So we have two decisions to make tonight. In the, in the form of agreeing or not to enter into the memorandum of understanding. Three, I guess. Second is fixed versus variable, and third is the split. So Laura, would you like to make a motion regarding the memorandum of understanding? Jeff, do we need to read the memorandum into the record, or we can simply vote on the memorandum?
You can simply vote on the memorandum. It's not a resolution.
Okay.
Though before voting to sign the memorandum, and that I would think the first two decisions need to be made as to the default, default product and the pricing option that the bill.
First.
Yeah, and then you would vote to sign that along with.
Do we, any, any necessary board discussion on either of those topics on the, the, the blend or the fixed variable? I, I feel that fixed, it feels like a more stable option right now and puts us in the safest stead.
I would agree. I, I think that just in terms of the way people think of their personal budgets or their business budgets, six makes more sense as well.
And if people wanted to choose variable, no, it's only the blend that the individual can choose. So we are choosing them. Yeah, right. Okay.
I agree with that. I think one important caveat is that it won't mean a fixed on the delivery, on the transit, on the kind of production charge, right? The generation charge, the, the Central Hudson delivery charge can still change. So there will be some variability, but it's holding a really important part of the bill constant. I think also, you know, what Glenn's explanation of his, that they're experts in the energy field and their assessment of, of what lie, what may lie ahead in terms of increased costs, that we have a, a good price now for a couple of years and having that kind of stability, I think is really, really important. So I'm supportive of the fixed price.
Okay. How about blends?
Are you good with?
You agreed with best?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think Eliza was nodding as well. Yeah. Let's talk about blend.
I mean, I'm, I'm now stuck on the analogy of like single malts. Because I could also, all right, I won't belabor that point, but I could.
I should have known that I, that to bring all the alcohol analogies for this. That was the way to, to connect.
I guess that I mean, I, I, I do agree that we should be, you know, any opportunity to be at the forefront of of doing the right thing in terms of the environment and it's just a no-brainer. And I don't, I don't know that I understand enough what the true difference will be, but I appreciate the commitment to being better. So it seems like the one hundred percent renewables is like the right choice.
In the indicative pricing summary, which is not yet a public document, two of the, two of the bidders, the, 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 the difference from blended to renewable in terms of pricing was, was very minimal. One, one of the respondents had a larger gap, but it's, it's not a dramatic difference from, from blended to hundred percent. Eliza?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say if we were really talking about the price of champagne and Cremant, I would go with the Cremant, but when talking about half a penny to do a hundred percent renewable, local and support New York State's initiative and effort and goal to get to most renewable, I think that that's the way to go. So I, I would also support the hundred percent renewable option. And, and if villagers don't feel that's worth their time and money, they can opt out. Exactly. In the CCA and just pick one of the other blends, if, if I understood that correctly. So if we're not keeping anybody from choosing in that way.
That's right. And residents will be able to see what the price is at each of those three, at each of these options, conventional blend or renewable, and have instructions on how to cho, to choose a different one. Something I feel strongly about is that as we're looking at the new energy environment and how we deliver renewables, I think, you know, recreating a grid like the old grid with large transmission spans is nuts. I think we should be looking locally and building as much local resiliency and local capacity as possible. I would be in favor of the hundred percent preference as well. So we have to vote on, we have to vote on each piece and then the entering of the memorandum?
I mean, it sounds like, I mean, I'm super happy that this is where we're landing. I'm, I'm thrilled. I mean, it seems like we're in agreement. And so
I'll make a You want, we don't need a vote on each piece, right?
Can I make a motion to sign the MOU with these two decisions in it? All right. So I'll make a motion to enable the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with conditional authorization to execute the electricity supply agreement, which selects as the default option, the CCA renewable electricity products and a pricing option of fixed rate for the term of the ESA.
Second. Would you like to make a second?
Second.
He was calling for a second.
Second.
A second by tweets. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I, I say I. Any opposed?
No.
Great.
Great. Thanks, everyone, for your public comment.
Yes.
Thank you, Glenn, for walking us through.
Thank you, guys. Yeah.
By noon tomorrow.
Excellent. Yeah. And apologies if I had any interruption in my connection. Thanks for, for suffering. Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Wait, wait, Glenn, wait, Glenn.
Oh, yep.
You just need to signature page tomorrow, correct?
Yes, please. Thank you. Oh, and the, the, the cover sheet, which indicates your preferences, though I, I heard them. So, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Onto budget. Come on up to the table, Michelle, our village accountant, Michelle Oscolino is joining us for the next iteration of budget discussion. How would you like to begin?
So tonight, let's recap a little bit. So we went through all of the general fund line by line. We went through all of water and sewer line by line. Last week, we came up with some proposals to see what rate increases look like in water and sewer. So it was asked to see what it would look like, all three of them together. So I did a little chart.
Super helpful, thank you.
Which I'm actually, I'm going to hand out a new one.
Okay.
It is off by a few dollars. Thanks, me. So this chart, it's exactly the same that I can tell you, just on the tax rate. I had a two percent and the budget's at two point four percent right now. So it, it's very hard to look at an annualized rate for the average person in the village, because everybody has different circumstances. But if we start with a sewer increase, it was proposed to go up to two dollars per thousand gallons of usage. It's sixty-one point three percent increase. It goes from a dollar twenty-four to two dollars. If we look at usage in the village from June to May of twenty-one to twenty-two, the majority of the accounts, eighty-six percent of all sewer accounts used under one hundred thousand gallons of water. So that means they used under one hundred thousand gallons of sewer because they build the same. That's eighty-six percent of the accounts. So if, if they used a hundred thousand, that adds seventy-six dollars a year. Quarterly, that's nineteen dollars a quarter. Mind you, forty-eight percent of the accounts are under forty thousand gallons of usage. So this is a little on the higher side to capture a bigger chunk of the village. When we talked about water increases, talked about the flat rate. So ten dollars per quarter, you know, if you're inside the village, that's forty dollars for the year. If you're outside the village, that's sixty dollars for the year. Then when we look at tax increases, the general fund right now is two point four percent of an estimated increase over last year's bills. It's hard to give an exact number. I've talked to Putnam County real property. The finalized rolls aren't done until middle of April, but this is a good snapshot. They don't anticipate many changes.
Okay.
But there could be a few pennies wise. So here, if you have a property that's assessed at two hundred thousand dollars taxable assessed value, that adds fifty-six dollars to your annual. Keeping in mind, seventy-three percent of all parcels on the village tax roll right now are under, are two hundred thousand dollars assessed or less. So that's a good chunk of the village. So if you add the seventy-six dollars on the sewer, which is probably a little high, the forty for the water and the fifty-six for the tax, you're looking at a hundred and seventy-two dollars for the year of an increase to a sample household.
And just to context, we have a number of members of the public who weren't with us last week. We were having discussion about water and sewer increases for a couple of reasons. On the water side, we have major infrastructure, water infrastructure issues coming down the pike that we need to be ready for, in the same way that we were ready and able, because we had general fund savings, we were ready and able to mobilize around the aqueduct connection. We would like to build a cushion again so that we're ready as we, as the beginning elements of the dam project come down the pike. On the sewer side, there was a real imbalance between per gallon usage of water and per gallon usage of sewer. And we, and also much lower than many municipalities. And we felt that it was important to have the folks using, who are using the service, be, be paying for the service, be using the, the resource, be paying for the resource.
Well, then it just, and, and the point that we couldn't make the budget work.
And we couldn't make the budget work.
We couldn't, on the sewer side, we couldn't, we couldn't cover all of our recurring expenses.
Because of many increases. Yeah.
Yeah.
So all of this is happening in a, in a, in the context of infrastructure needs and vastly rising yeah, re- recurring costs.
So with that being said, the to piggyback on more of the, the sewer fund is now, it's balanced with appropriate items coming out of fund balance. The water fund is the same. I wouldn't say that this builds a cushion, but it allows for continued engineering that was typically paid out of fund balance.
That's better said.
To now be paid out of operating because dam engineering, it's going to be a couple of, if dams are going to be fixed, it's going to be years and years worth of work. It's going to be recurring. This allows it to be recurring. And, you know, if you think about, once the dam engineering is gone, well, now you don't need those rates. Well, now you will for the construction portions to pay for, you know, so that, that increase in costs doesn't go away when the engineering stops. There'll be payments for a bond or something to pay for the dam itself.
On the gen, and excuse me, to clarify, the dam is not going to be repaired on the cost of property taxes alone, where we will need to seek out grants and low-interest loans. This is going to be a pa, it's going to be a package that gets us to dam repair.
And then on the, the general fund side, the budget will be built with some add-ins and things requested. Not everything requested was in, but some things, and it, and it works at that two point four percent. If that wants to be lowered or raised, it can be. We can go up to a maximum of an increase of four point eight five percent. And then you can go down as low as you'd like to. So there is flexibility on the general fund side, but knowing that if we do decrease the tax rate, we're going to have to pull some expenses out or replace the revenue in a different manner. But this is, this is a snapshot of the majority of eighty-six percent of sewer uses, seventy-three percent of property owners.
So this is center range.
Does the board have any comments?
Um, I, I also want to just reiterate, like, I think with the sewer and water rates, the raises are something that didn't happen very much in, in many years past, for, for years and years, the rates didn't go up. And so we've been slowly raising the rates, but I, I don't think these prices even still cover operation costs if we were to operate our water system in a way that's completely sustainable and making, keeping up with the needs of repairs and replacing parts and things. So just so, so villagers know, you know, these are still fairly low rates, even though they're going.
And we, we do also, we, we live in the reality of a, of a modifying regulatory environment and those will have, changes in regulations will have cost implications as well.
I'm really appreciative that you made this budget late. For me going through the budget for the first time, seeing what the actual, what, what those percentage changes are for like the average budget and then seeing them all together to make sure that when we add them up, it seems reasonable. It's really helpful for me. So I feel much more comfortable with our proposals, looking at those.
Anything from you?
Um, no, I mean, I, my only question, I get the, the last number, but how did you, how did you get like two point four versus like two point five? Did you just?
So two point four percent is half of the maximum allowed to take place to levy. That's where we started. And we've been working off of it, and it hasn't changed since we started working off of it.
Got it. Thank you. Just a starting point. So maybe we can turn to, are we ready to turn to what has made it into the budget, what has not?
I'd like to start with water and sewer first because they're simpler. Last week, we, we talked about the things that needed to come off of fund balance to get water and sewer to a comfortable spot. So for those changes, we'll start with so on the water spreadsheets, on the revenue side, increase the revenue, almost seventy thousand. It's just for the flat rates between Full Spring and Nelsonville. And then lowers the fund balance contribution by seventy thousand. The only changes on the revenue side. On the expense side, only changes were, we didn't add expenses, we didn't remove expenses, we just changed how they were being funded. And then forty-two dollars due to rounding, I took out of the contingent account.
And when we say changing how they're funded, we mean appropriately moving recurring expenses to the revenue side rather than fund balance. Okay.
On the water side, the only thing that may be missing from the budget is, is we want, if the board wanted to borrow that hundred eighty-five thousand we talked about, to borrow a hundred eighty-five thousand for the cat, so aqueduct connection, all that the bond counsel attorney needs. Um, all that the bond council attorney needs, um, is to verify secret that it changed.
So we wouldn't, we would need to do a reaffirming. The vote, I mean, nothing has, nothing has changed in.
So secret was done back in twenty thirteen or twenty eleven when the. Board back then, um.
I don't know who's ringing, sorry. It'll stop.
Secret was done and it was determined it was a negative declaration, whatever. So as long as it's still a negative declaration, the board can go ahead.
Right, but to do that, would it be undertaking another review or if, or documenting that no conditions have changed?
Documenting that all conditions have changed.
Okay.
If they have, then you would need to do another secret.
And so that's a, that's a John first. Matt Krug question.
I thought we did something. We, we didn't do any, anything secret related.
For that, for this portion. Okay, so back to the bond council, assuming that a secret, nothing has changed with secret.
Nothing probably has. Um, so assuming that we would review it, that's the only piece. And then we don't need to post for it, the bonding or the borrowing has already been authorized. But that interest payment isn't built into it and that'd be about seventy four hundred dollars.
And can you talk through again? Why that might be helpful to approach that project with?
Right now, the Catskill Aqueduct is being paid out of fund balance. And we're able to pay it out of fund balance because the fund balance is rather healthy. If you were to borrow half of the amount of the project. It frees up more fund balance to be able to get construction going on more pieces of the project in the future. The, the upside of this unique borrowing situation is that the borrowing has already been authorized in the past. But that authorization ends this year. So if the board wanted to borrow for projects in the future. They can, we usually borrow in May, um, but there's a sixty day notice period. You'd have to know in January that you wanna borrow in May. Pretty much. So it's, it's more of a, a planning and a process. Um, this is just happens to be unique because this process was already done. So we're going, not necessarily for the aqueduct.
Alone, but for the larger. Um, impoundment system, we're going to have to borrow at some point. Right now is a time when borrowing is, is relatively easy in terms of process. And we would spend from that borrowed amount and retain an amount in our. General fund, so taking advantage of our fun, our fun balance. So taking advantage of capacity and having that amount left behind for future use.
You're leveraging debt.
Yep, leveraging debt.
Um, it's, um, something to be decided, um, probably. You know, by the next meeting or two, um. It's not a big process. I think if we, if the board moves ahead and does it, the seventy four hundred. You know, some of that engineering can come back out of fund balance to pay for the interest. I don't think the rates would need to change again.
That you would have enough of a rate increase already, but we're re- reallocating how we're using the revenue. Thoughts from anyone else?
I think the, as you put it, the fact that we're like already in the midst of. Doing this project. It seems like this is the way to continue the process without. A hiccup of what happens next budget, what happens next budget. So borrowing that money now seems like a, and also because we have the authorization to do it, it seems like the wise decision.
Thoughts from Eliza?
I would agree. Um, I think that, you know, because we have a fund balance to work with and leveraging the debt. Is the wisest way going forward when we have a lot of projects that we're trying to achieve simultaneously. And big projects.
And you had had a conversation with someone.
The bond council.
Bond council who felt like this was the prudent thing to do as well.
He won't advise on if it's good or bad to do, just if the village can or can't, and the village can. Um, financial advisor, same thing, just gives us, gives the board options.
And his, his recommendation was what? Not his recommendation, his, his comment was, here's an option. I mean, it just seems like it, it buys us flexibility. With an amount of ease that is not normally baked into the process, um, because we already have the preapproval. That means we shift, we shift the expense lines a bit. That revises the water.
Some of the engineering that's paid out of operating now, in the past has been paid out of fund balance. I have it all in operating, move seven thousand back to fund dollars.
And is that an amount that, um, on your, on your scale of concern about operating out of fund balance?
Okay. What's the payment term? How, how long is the loan for?
So these are bands, so they're renewed every year. Until you go to bond, so there's no set interest rate and there's minimum payment schedule. Um, I don't know off the top of my head what it would be for the one eighty five. It would add principal payment in the next budget cycle, not the one we're talking about. But usually on the band side, right now we're paying more than the minimum. So even if you add in some more debt, given that we're paying more than the minimum, it'd still be okay.
So that enabled the, the iteration project at the sewer plant. And so the band, the bands that you, you see in the expense line on that side, that's.
Yeah.
The continuation of that amount.
Yep.
And that they bought, they bought capacity to do that project.
And I should, one other question. So I know that there are, it's common, as I understand, to have. Low interest loans are kind of special loans for water projects, but it seems, is. Our, is our dam project eligible for those kind of special loans for water projects or is this?
Prior to, I believe, June of twenty twenty one. There was a point in time where dams were never eligible. Um, then ARPA started to change that, the federal build back better, the acronyms are not my. With these new infrastructure programs and influx of more money, the requirements have been changing. Based on some preliminary discussions with market tectonic, they're still pretty strict. Um, they allow you could, to consider dams, but it's not a hundred percent or. There has, they said maybe some components of the dam for those, that water, um, program. But until tectonic does what they're doing, they're not gonna know everything to be able to. Apply because it hasn't really been, the engineer hasn't been updated yet, you have to know the components.
But we do have contact that. Not EDC, I can't pull the acronym out of my head for the, the water, no, no.
There's D E C.
No.
D E F C.
No, E F C, which is the environmental facility corporation. Which is one of the sources of low interest municipal loans. I have submitted some information on the dam project for them, um, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, it's sitting on my desk. Is getting a sense of the project and what might be available now or going forward. Some of this is getting on, getting on project lists. Um, I mean, we're learning, we're learning what we have to do as we go along.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, that's helpful. So if this is the one thing, this is one thing that we can do now and figuring out all of those other. Kind of pieces, because it's gonna be a project. Great, that's supportive.
So, so tonight you need sort of a consensus all clear on making that shift in the budget that would allow. That borrowing to happen.
And rates, we need to just come to a consensus on what we're going to do with rates for water.
With water rates.
And then we'll, we'll memorialize that with the resolution.
I feel comfortable with the, the water rates, we, after our extended discussion last week, I feel comfortable where we are. Um, and, and how that looks, how that looks in relation to tax rates, different tax rates as well.
I have a question. Um, we didn't really discuss what is not in the budget right now.
Right now, we're just talking about water and sewer and then we'll come.
Right, so with the water and sewer, were there any things that we couldn't cover with the rates, tax rate as we are proposing?
Um, on the water side, it was this, this payment, that's why we're talking about it, the interest to borrow, um, and we didn't hit sewer yet.
Okay, but those are the only things that weren't included.
Water, that was the only thing.
Okay.
So water rate increase, ten dollars per quarter in the village flat fee. Which is one and a half outside the village, so fifteen per quarter.
Right, in the outside areas of Nelsonville and Phillips Town.
Okay. So on the sewer side. Um, on the revenue, um, revenue went up about thirty four thousand. Um, fund balance transfer went down twenty nine thousand. Um, the difference of that five thousand added back into the budget, something that was excluded. Um, is extra sledge hauling. Matt was very vocal that, you know, the bare minimum is not gonna work and he needs extra trucks and. You know, we went back and looked at usage, there's always a month where there's.
Overage.
There's overage, usually, you know, it, it becomes a timing. He does it every four weeks roughly, but. You know, it's the same thing. Everyone says there's four weeks in a month, but when you multiply it out, it's forty eight instead of fifty two, so it makes sense. Um, so that five thousand goes to extra sledge hauling.
And we are, that bid is out.
The bid is not out, Matt needs to review the.
Okay.
Um, but the engineers did draft a bid, um, to hopefully get more competitive rates through anyhow.
Fingers crossed.
So then on the, on the expense side, um, all the other changes other than that, five thousand for, um, sledge hauling. Uh, is just the reallocation instead of some of the. Expenses being paid out of fund balance, they can now be paid out of operating due to that sewer increase. So the increase on sewer is only on the usage side. And that is. It goes from one twenty four per thousand gallon up to two dollars per thousand gallons. Um, so it's a seventy six cents increase.
Seventy six dollar increase, seventy six cents per one thousand gallons. Oh, per one thousand gallons, yep, yep, yep.
Everyone's okay with that? Could we go to residents at another meeting?
I, I am, I think that we were, we, we have to level out. Use fees on the two sides. Again, this, this is a step on the way, it's not, it's not a giant jump, it's a compromise. Tweets, Eliza, have anything to add?
Um, I'm just trying to look at the last meeting, it, what we left out and so like what was added. Cause when I look, it doesn't look like it's changed that much. There's been like slight tweaks here.
It was, but we couldn't, we had things coming out of fund balance that were recurring expenses. And so she moved, right?
The source of payment.
Moved those over and then also increased the sledge hauling amount.
Right, um, but they were, let me see, maybe I'm remembering incorrectly.
For sewer, we each only had one item excluded, and now we've found a way to put both of those back in.
Okay.
The general has a much bigger list.
Got it, yeah, no, I see that the list is pretty small from last week. Um, does this, this includes the cleaning costs and everything?
Um, so, no, cleaning costs are not included.
Okay, that was, that was two thousand three hundred for each, at, at bare minimum for each facility, so.
But taking a portion of the bids and allocating a portion of each of them to those departments.
That's right. I don't know if we do it a different way, but since they're specific to those departments, if we want to do it that way. Then we should include those in this budget, I would expect.
Is that, um, it hasn't been done before, that those, those buildings have been regularly cleaned? Is that an appropriate? Expense in, within these two budgets, if it's. To divide between general fund and these two?
You know, water cleaning would come out of the water fund and sewer.
That's what I, that's what I mean.
Um, I can go over with Matt and see if there's anything else that we can. Um, lower to try and squeeze it on the sewer side. You know, that was pretty tight. The water side, maybe. The board hadn't talked about cleaning as a whole yet, so I didn't really include it, um, now that the quotes are in, and it's a conversation to have.
Well, I think.
It's a chicken or the egg, do we decide to pay for cleaning admitted?
In order to be.
Well, I mean, then, and then I guess another way to ask the question is. It could cleaning for those buildings be paid for out of, straight from, straight from the larger general fund?
It shouldn't be.
It shouldn't be. I mean. I, I feel like Eliza does, but it's, that the, the buildings need to be cleaned and staff needs clean, clean offices and bathrooms.
I'm just looking, I'm trying to find, trying to find money somewhere. You, you did a big increase of the electricity. Plant, I'm looking at water, now I'm looking at sewer.
Both of them.
Um, now that we agreed to a CCA that gives us a consistent price, do you think that those are overly, um, high?
It depends on where the CCA price comes in. If the CCA price is based off of the market, the current market value and it just locks it in, no. If you're, if the CCA is lower than the market value and locks it possibly.
Will be a, they, right, Glenn just explained it. It will be something like twenty five percent below. Through past. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm.
I see where you're going with this. Like, maybe that expense will be lower.
The, so those are quite high, it, they look, you know.
But, but you can't, you have to budget for what we know in this moment, we can't budget for future.
Do you have, so you know what the CCA rate is?
That's the estimate.
We'll know it in like a week. Wait, I'll come back.
That's what he said, yeah.
The reason why water sewer is so much higher, they were part of the CCA. So I think I've talked about it. We didn't see a gradual increase, the CCA just cut off and now, you know, so. The CCA rate that the village used to have, which is much lower than the market rate. Um, because it locked in so much sooner before everything went up. I went back through water and sewage usage and the kilowatts are on track. So if we use a kilowatt based on the average of the current market rate over the past few months. These budget numbers are where they need to be. If we, if they, this is gonna come back in a week, the public hearing is on April twelfth. We could have possibly a change, you know, if it's gonna be a week by April, uh, the Friday before, that is.
Maybe you and I can chat and I can give you some, a sense of, of where the numbers are. And we can play out some scenarios, because we're, we're trying to find twenty three hundred out of each. That might be a place, if we think.
Sorry, that's, it's a dumb question, but if the contract for cleaning is for all municipal. Buildings.
This isn't Eliza's question, this is her bid.
Okay. Then, but. Why couldn't we look at it as, as a general contract and all the building being part of?
Liza, you wanna explain how you're arriving at the number that you?
Yeah, so each of the, the bidders for the cleaning services bid out for each building. So they did Village Hall, they did Fire Department, they did, um. The water treatment, wastewater, highway department, all these different departments, um, the visitor center, public bathrooms. Um, and they broke it out and priced it that way. So, um, we have it priced based on department. Um, I don't know if Michelle is allowed to lump it together as shared services and put it into. The, um, general fund for.
It's not Michelle allowed to.
Michelle, what are we allowed doing?
Even when it's village wide, so we have an attorney who's village wide. When he works on water stuff, he gets charged to water. We have a financial software system that's used in Village Hall to support the water and sewer billings. A portion of that goes, so all village wide contracts are parsed out to the appropriate line and the fund.
Health insurance, liability insurance, all that, this all applies the same way, so.
Right, so it makes sense to divide it based on department?
Say that again?
It, it makes sense to divide it up based on department because, you know, it's, that's the way we do all the other things. I just wonder, can we, you know, I mean, it's, it's a small amount to finding two thousand dollars, is it something that we could raise the rates? Just enough to cover that, or, um, is it something where we can move the fund balance around the way you did?
I would prefer first to model what we might expect to see with the CCA, based on the, on the numbers that we're seeing now as estimates. And see how close that comes. What the
Uh, can I ask another one?
Go ahead.
Repairs and improvements. There's a increase from last year. Could any of that be shifted over to one-time payments? Or in sewer?
Well, I mean, that's kinda how it works.
Repairs and, and improvements would be like ongoing stuff. If it was a purchase of a large piece to replace a full-on pump or a big, but repairs and improvements are mostly gonna be, oh, that, that valve went down and you need to fix tomorrow, so that's, that's operating.
And your twenty-five thousand is based on the conversation with Matt that indicated it should be higher than in the past.
Well, just think about how many
That twenty-five thousand in sanitary sewer, that's already fund balance.
Oh, I know, right.
And, and, and just think about how many times over the last year we've had to take a vote mid-year because something broke.
No, no, I
That's so fun.
I don't know that we're gonna resolve this tonight, but it sounds like, do, do we have consensus that we want to try to find a way to squeeze this in? Yes.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Michelle, for your records, it's, it's the exact amount for each department would be two thousand three hundred forty dollars. Don't lose that forty.
The contract rates would be good for a year, so then we Oh, like, most contracts have built-in, like, increased escalation clauses. So, if this contract started, say, in May, that's still one month of escalation to build in, if there is escalation. Or if it's a two-year contract, then we don't have to worry, I don't know how it's, um.
Wouldn't it be better to have it two years, huh?
Knowing what, uh, rates are is more important than the length of the contract.
For the cleaning contract, I think this bidder is probably not likely to raise the rates to us over two years, but I can definitely find out.
Well, it'd be good, it's a good question to, to ask all of them. Okay, is there, can we further water and sewer beyond this point tonight?
I don't think so. I'll talk with Laura, learn more about how the CCA rates would work, see if we can change anything there. Um, if, I'll talk to Matt and then we'll see, it might come back to, you know, rates a little bit. On the sewer side, it might come back to a couple more pennies on the rates.
And, and to be clear, what we're talking about here is providing clean bathroom, locker room, office, lab for the people who keep our water clean for us to drink, um, and make sure that we're protecting that river, so. Okay.
And then moving on to the general fund, um, so from a couple weeks ago, there was some changes to revenue. We increased occupancy tax. Increased parking on Main Street to four dollars an hour, um, some three fifty. Um, we lowered C-streak a little bit, um, added in residential parking from there. On the expense side, added in maintenance costs for, not maintenance, uh, software or licensing costs for kiosks. I changed, uh, an STR software, took out the tax software. Um, we have parking handhelds, software fees included. Changed the parking enforcement officer from seventeen an hour to twenty an hour and added two, an extra one, so there's two. I added in civic plus website changes, um, they sent a quote of eight hundred and twelve dollars. I added in from fund balance, Department of State grants to do a consolidation study. So that's on the revenue and the expense side. Added in, uh, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred in fund balance contribution for miscellaneous village-wide general fund projects, we talked about two fifty being a number roughly. So I had forty-eight thousand already built in. You add in that twelve-five from the Department of State, the balance was two thirty-nine-five. We have a round number of a three hundred thousand fund balance contribution to the budget for a one-time project.
Okay.
Where are we with? On the garbage side, when do we have the additional pickup? Starting?
The Saturdays on
The Saturdays and, yeah, Saturdays on Main Street and the Water.
It was requested for four months, so it was quoted at one thousand and change a month, roughly one thousand a month, so I put in four months.
Four months, and we determined the when.
That was how the quote came over, it came over as four months worth, like July, August, November, October.
I'm just, something that's, that's in my mind is, I mean, we sit here on Main Street all day and in the middle of the week in April, there are already people walking on the street and, and, you know, we had initially talked about a four-month peak season, right, like August, September, October, November. I, I'm, I'm concerned that we're already seeing these big, we're already seeing numbers of people increase, and I'm wondering if we're, if we're, if it's enough, if we need Saturdays earlier in the summer. I, this gives me no joy to, to add on that expense, this is a really great place for us to advocate again with the county, um, for help with this, but I'm, I'm worried about making sure that we don't have the sanitary issue we had last summer. It, what, you know, the worst of it was definitely within those, that four-month peak.
Quick question, if we're getting Big Belly, um, bins, though, wouldn't that help improve that?
The, the Big Belly, the Big Belly proposal is complicated, those supply chains are such that they won't, they can't, if, if it were Big Belly, that company, it's four to six months on availability. I have concerns about the other companies we looked at, I mean, we could try to look at other companies again, but I think I had concerns about service with one, um, and capacity with the other, they were only thirty-five gallon. I'm wondering if, you know, if we can't make Big Bellies happen this summer, it kind of makes, it kind of makes the argument for even more need, if we don't have the compact, the compacting in time for the season, I mean, we'd have them, if, if we were to approve them in the next budget cycle and order them in June, we could potentially have them for the end of the season.
Right.
They're doing it in this budget cycle, we can't take delivery of them.
Yeah.
We haven't, also have not determined as a board, we just talked, we talked through the numbers that I, the initial numbers I'd gotten.
Um, I, I, I think, like, most of Main Street kind of thinks of the high season starting at Memorial Day. So, I mean, if, if you wanted to look at it that way and start June, July, and do five months.
I, it's for me, it's, it is not just about what most of Main Street thinks, it's what our residents have to tolerate through that high season, no matter what street they live on, um, in terms of garbage impacts and all the, all the yuck.
Right, but I'm talking about how often do the garbage cans overflow? They don't start overflowing in May and April, just because we have people on the streets, they're not overflowing these past weekends when there were lots of people there.
I'm, I'm really worried that, are we, are we going to, is that gonna happen and is it, is it gonna look different this year, given? I'm asking, none of us know this, but I'm worrying about the volume of people we're seeing and will that make an issue, a garbage issue sooner?
Well, again, they only overflow, they, they don't overflow every weekend for four months, they overflow like specific weekends when it's perfect weather or it's a holiday weekend. So, I, I mean, while I, I value the concern and, and the fear, I think in reality, like, the idea of cans overflowing for five months straight is not yet a reality, um, but I could be, you know, I could be struck down by lightning and be totally wrong. And this could be the year for that, so.
How quickly could, if we, if we saw a problem happening earlier, sort of budget, sorry, budget aside, logistically
I mean, they were very responsive They were very responsive to us when the garbage truck was failing and we would call on a Tuesday and say, truck's not gonna start this week, can you pick stuff up Thursday? I'm not advocating that we do it that way, but I will say they were very responsive to need.
Well, we paid for it.
Yeah, we paid for it, for sure, I mean, it wasn't for nothing.
Yeah, and it wasn't a Saturday.
And it wasn't
Regular day that they're working.
I think it would make much more sense to look at it as like, a, a new ad, long-term situation versus a short-term ad hoc approach, because that's when we get into trouble, and that's when we spend money that's not.
Well, do others share my concern about the number of months that we have allocated for an additional pickup? Maybe I'm the only one who's worrying.
No, I, I agree, I agree, I mean, things are changing, I mean, I, I don't think, you know, it's hard to know, but I would, people are coming now, so.
I also feel like it's, it's something that people really notice.
It's a big impact.
It's a big impact and it's not that expensive, all, you know, when we look at our whole budget for adding that line in them, I think it, you know, a thousand dollars a month to not have overflowing, not have the chance of overflow, but not have overflowing trash in our, on our Main Street, feels like a good investment to me, and I think that we should be working toward finding someone else to pay for it, but till then, it's, it's on our lap, and, you know, so I would be in favor of expanding it, maybe it's June through November, I don't, I'm, I don't notice when the trash builds up, I just, you know. Yeah, I know, I know when it happens is bad, so, I'd be in favor of expanding.
So, right now we have four months, would, do we wanna, do we wanna try to build in for six? And we hope that we don't have to make the call?
That sounds rude.
But that's, if we don't make the call, if we don't pre-arrange and then we call them up in June, will they change their rate, or do you think that?
Well, we would need to negotiate it now, we're up, we know we're, we're at the year cycle when there's an escalation in the cost, the escalation is built into the budget.
Yeah.
Um, it would be a new conversation.
Yeah.
I asked for an estimate of, if we were to add for four months, what would that look like? And that's the number that we got and Michelle plugged in.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think it's safe to assume based on what they've told us that it would, you know,
Yeah.
Be around six.
Yeah.
Do you remember if that quote, how the fuel surcharge built in?
I don't, I could look it up.
Uh, not important, it's three percent, but, um.
But we talked about that as a negotiation point, is if we expanded our, you and I talked about it as when we go to have the conversation with them, if we expand our service, can we bring that down? That is a chunk, it's a big chunk.
Three percent on the total contract. And they bill it as they come, so. I don't, I just, I don't remember if I built it, if that one thousand forty includes a three percent or not. Three percent on the thousand is immaterial, but three percent is built into the whole contract, plus the escalation. You know, it's three or three and a half percent on two hundred thousand dollars, it's a big, it's a big expense. It's over two hundred thousand, because they're charging us on, um, the residents who added on service, even though they're paying for services, so. So that is one way to lower expenses in the general fund if oil could negotiate.
Not on the fuel. Um, okay, I'm mindful that we're at eight-thirty and we still have a bunch of budget items, how shall we? We wanna have a look at what's, what's excluded.
Rates, so right now, excluded, um, stuff that would be reoccurring, that can't be paid on a fund balance would be cleaning and the CAD license, so the CAD license, we just got a number, a real rough number of three thousand, that's something that the CAD for the police department is something that's being rolled out countywide, um, it's pretty much a necessity.
Yeah.
Um, and that, so that would need to be built into the general fund budget. So, um, right now, we're talking about two thousand on cleaning, three thousand for the CAD. And then now we can talk about cleaning, so built into the budget is cleaning of the Main Street bathrooms on the weekends and holidays for, you know, the nine months. And then Village Hall and the police department, because they're already being cleaned. So anything in price changes or more frequency would be a cost added to the budget.
Eliza, the, the firehouse has a current contract for cleaning, but we were bidding it out to see what it looked like as part of a whole, what is the amount? What is the amount we're looking at at the bids as part of?
So, the amount on the lowest bid for the firehouse is forty-four hundred twenty dollars for the year. Um, worth three hundred sixty-eight bucks a month for the firehouse.
So, so one of the ways to save on that number is, is to have the firehouse continue its current contract, they're not without cleaning. Other buildings are without.
Well, my understanding was that the firehouse would pay for this portion. Um, the idea was that if we bidded all of these different facilities together, we'd get a better price from the vendor, which would save the fire department money as well as the village.
That conversation with them about how it compares, I don't know what they're paying.
Okay, so we should pass them.
Um, but that's not necessarily an element that changes what lands on our side.
That's right, I think that if, if we took it or left it, um, the other elements would probably stay the same price. So that's not something we have to consider in this budget.
So if we look at other items that are excluded and so CAD, CAD, we don't have a choice about necessarily, although we don't, because it's gonna come and it's, we're gonna have to upgrade. The kiosks, so you do have kiosks, what's, what's up here versus?
So I have the kiosk service and reoccurring fees built in, but not the purchase of them themselves. It's not allocated from fund balance, or because the thought was to purchase the kiosk by May thirty-first. But due to supply chain issues, if it has to go into next year, the slide kept it here in case we need to have that conversation.
But we do have a favorable bid that can, that we are told can be completed by May thirty-first.
That's right.
So this may not be an issue for next year. Parking kiosk, we may be able to accomplish with current general fund. The purchase of the, of the actual kiosk.
Yeah, the board would have to
Yeah, but Eliza would have to bring forward the data that she's gathered for the board to approve, but there's a potential for us to take care of it in current fund, okay, um, what I don't see as, um, an option right now is another pickup truck. Um, the Gale allocation has net zero impact, I think I think there's some real work that needs to be done on making sure that we're getting the right product for compactors, and it's just not gonna happen on a timeline. It's not gonna happen on a timeline for this budget year, um, and maybe what we do is, maybe the additional pickup buys us time to make sure we're getting the right product. buys us time to make sure we're getting the right product.
I mean, it's, I mean, they're gonna also have to pick that up eventually.
Right, we're gonna be paying for them to pick that up. It's a matter of how quickly they fill on a Saturday.
Would we be, if we're paying for them, you know, if, if we could get them tomorrow, we, and we'd be paying for them out of fund balance tomorrow, would it not make sense to just do the same next year? If we can, when we can get them?
Yep.
Um, so then the question is that two thirty-nine for miscellaneous village-wide projects? Is that okay? So, to decide that of that two thirty-nine, a portion of that would or do you need to add more fund balance allocation?
Well, let's look at what else got excluded.
Isn't there a maintenance fee or some kind of, there's a subscription fee? With the compactor.
That's included in the bids we have, but we need to get bids that are more comparable, because the sizes were so different and there's just, there's, there's work to do.
Yeah, but just say that it's not all out of fund balance, that would be a regret.
And then so the reoccurring was not, because we don't have those numbers right now.
So, other things that were excluded in this iteration of the budget were, um, raises for the mayor and the trustees, which we didn't ask for anyway. Um, uh, and, and the other elected official is the justice. Um, others excluded. Okay, so this was a, that's a one, that's a, um, that's a personnel issue on that one, um, I don't see adding tow behind chipper, I don't see adding a stump grinder, those are things that we can hire out.
But I also thought those were things that we could borrow from. But I mean, I thought there was potential for agreement with the town to borrow.
That was for the lift.
About chipper and grinder, we talked about, we talked about the lift. The reality is that the amount of time that he uses a chipper and a grinder, it's a few times a year.
My understanding that that, that was at some point discussed as the possibility of something that we could borrow when needed.
Um, we have not had that discussion specifically with the town, but in theory, it's something that Kent, that Phillips Town has, Kent has, the other highway departments have, that we could so that, you know, those two, that's, that's a thirty-eight thousand. They're big items. For items that don't get used that often. Um, we've, you, we've left out bike training, be great to have, but when we're pinching pennies. Um, and we've left out the tax module on Granicus, and can you talk through? I believe where we landed with that was we feel that in the first year, the numbers will be small enough to handle actual taxing in a more manual way. That's how we got to leaving off that module.
I think that in order to get the hotels, once the occupancy tax law is passed, they're already used to filing, you know, sales tax and stuff, it's just some more, there's only, what, four of them to do it by hand. By the time the SDR stuff is really up and going and, you know, it's the way I look at it, to spend five thousand dollars to collect revenue on revenue that you don't even know how many operators you're gonna have. Now five thousand may surpass the revenue brought in. Um, if you exclude the, especially excluding the hotels from it, and the hotels, I, I think that paper for those four is easy.
Understood, just wanted to pop through it again, so we have, also have audience members who weren't here for that part of the conversation.
We don't know how many, we do, our max is gonna be forty. We're not talking hundreds and hundreds.
So, of the items that are excluded from the budget, that I think in my view are, are critical to try, to, are critical to get in, in one way or another, looking, going back again and looking at revenue side is cleaning. Um, kiosk.
Let's talk about cleaning, cleaning for what exactly? Because there's a couple different items on the table, we talked about water and sewer. Cleaning for here and police department is covered in the budget. Um, there's options for cleaning at, um, the visitor center restroom and the mayor's park restroom and how often the frequency drives the cost. So if we're gonna talk about what kind of cleaning needs to try and be fit in, we need to talk about the frequency.
So last year, we paid for weekends, our, the highway crew, the roadways and facilities crew did the bathrooms during the week, um, I think that that's appropriate as a facilities crew to have them cleaning during the week. Um, and focus on weekends when there isn't anyone here, I mean, isn't any staff here.
So then if that's the case.
I mean, that makes sure others feel that way, that's, good night, I know, it's just so exciting, right?
Holidays, right? We're talking about holidays as well.
So then if that's the thought, um, we don't need to add any more cleaning into the general fund budget?
Well, oh, because we put water in.
Waters and water.
Water, sewers and sewer.
Weekends and holidays at Main Street bathrooms are covered already, based on the lowest bidder here happens to be the person already doing it, so that price is set. Um,
There's, and there's the highway, the bathroom and the office at highway.
Yeah, that would be you, the highway department and then also mayor's park, if, if we've got like little league playing on weekends there. Um, do we wanna have a cleaning service clean the bathrooms? At least on the weekends and holidays when games are happening.
I would think that that could be a more as-used, on an as-used basis.
Couldn't that be done? I feel like it's not gonna be used so much that it couldn't be cleaned on the Monday after, like be cleaned on Mondays by our existing crew, rather than.
What's been done in the past.
Yeah.
I've never used those bathrooms, so I don't know what they're like on the weekend at a little league game.
They're not open, they're not, they're open, they're only open for people using the park, they're not generally open in the way that Main Street is. Um, when they, you know, when they have been open for events, visitors do go in and use them, um, so it's a higher use volume when there's an event happening, but they're not opened unless there's an event in Mayor's Park. That's, that's an event in Mayor's Park.
Okay.
Or a birthday party, or, you know, whatever it might be down there, but they're not left open and unattended. Because we haven't had, we haven't had the budget to, to do that. So I feel like another, you know, that's kind of where we need to be this year with them as well, we've got, we've got two bathrooms that we can manage to maintain. John Paff, I'm sorry that you're sitting through all of this, we're, we're almost there.
That's quite all right.
You, you can see how pennies and dimes count at the municipal level.
It, it is, I, I, it's very fascinating and I'm not completely.
Okay, we're, we're getting there. Um, so it's, it's hi, it's highway that needs to come up. Um, and I don't think we need a change, I mean, we would, it'd be great to have the bathrooms open at Mayor's Park, but I don't think that's in the cards this year, myself.
Let's talk about a quick summary, so visitor's center, weekends, hire a cleaning crew. During the week, highway department does it. For highway garage's bathroom, they'll hire a cleaning crew for their bathroom, but have them clean the public restroom. And then Village Hall. Well, when you say it like that. Village Hall and police department are already on a contract clean.
Well, I mean, if you had to prioritize cleaning, frankly, wha, the water and wastewater, on, on my view, is much higher because we've got labs we're dealing with, um. They, highway could do its own bathroom, they have opted not to, it's disgusting. Um, I mean, it is, it's disgusting.
Isn't their job to, I mean, like, we're I just think, like, their job is to maintain the public spaces and the public buildings. Um, nobody sees the highway department bathrooms except for them, and if they have five hundred things on their list of to-dos, I have a hard time believing that they would make that the priority, cleaning their own toilet. Um, which is, it looks the way it does, and it's, it is disgusting and it is degrading to have to work there, so.
Add in, it would be the same as water and sewer, twenty-two thousand three hundred forty dollars to have the cleaner at the lowest bid clean highway then, so that's to add in twenty-three hundred to the general fund budget. So.
Let her know we have her phone here, she's.
So, for, um, so Eliza would like to add, try and get that twenty-three hundred in for highway. Um, three other board members.
I stepped out, so I don't know how that conversation ended, can you let Catherine know that we have her phone here so that she stops calling it, trying to find it?
For twenty-three hundred dollars, would we like to try and add that to the general fund expenses for the highway garage bathroom and office to be cleaned? Eliza is a yes? Am I trying to fit in twenty-three hundred and forty dollars?
Good point. I can't, I don't know how to turn this, it's a crazy thing, I don't know how to turn it down. So, so to Michelle's point, it's the facilities crew and they have.
I wasn't making a point, I was just all, going over.
To the issue that you identified, you are not wrong, um, and you know, I don't know that they've ever been asked to clean their own bathroom. So, once you frame it out that way, I mean, there isn't a lab in there, it's a garage. Um.
Twenty-three hundred increase or not, and then we can move on to the next one.
I, I, go ahead, sweeps.
I would say no.
I would say no as well.
I think they're responsible for cleaning, for maintenance of our facilities, I would think that should include the bathroom at that facility.
But they don't do the bathrooms of Village Hall.
But.
The bathrooms of Village Hall or the fire department.
That is true.
Or water and waste.
No, no, they don't do them anywhere, other than the public bathrooms.
Yeah.
Um, and, I mean, if, if the public ba, like, honestly, that's the worst place to have to clean.
True, and we had them coming in on weekends to do it, so, I mean, I, this is, you know.
It's a larger discussion.
It's a larger discussion, for sure.
I say no.
I say no as well.
Um, but.
I feel like, I, I mean, I totally see the logic. But there's also, you know, a service that we are now providing to every other, all the other village employees.
All too true.
And then, um, kind of singling out, um, highway? Which feels a little bit, um, it just.
So here's a, this might be a compromise. It is an inherently filthy facility, because there, the doors are open all the time, the trucks are in and out all the time. What if instead of regular, we were to do a, a less, like a scheduled deep clean every X, every quarter, that's what it really needs, is a, is a deep clean to, to get the, the deep grossness. Maintaining it is always going to be hard, because of the nature of the building, they're dealing with motor oil and.
So then that's an origin to add a factor then, to keep it clean.
It is, or to do a, to do a quarterly deep clean.
How about a monthly even, um, the lowest bidder offered a deep clean for a hundred dollars? Um, and a daily or a weekly rate was, which would be one time is forty-five dollars. So what if we had him going once a month and do a deep clean? It would be almost half the price, and it would still get the highway facility up to, you know, a more humane standard.
I mean, it's, 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 in the scheme of things, it's pennies.
Why don't we try, see what the numbers look like without it? But not adding in more cleaning at Mayor's Park or visitor center?
No.
You got the existing.
The facilities crew does it during the week and we pay on the weekends.
People want something else? We can figure that out. Not in the budget.
If, if the lowest bidder has awarded it for Village Hall two, and they came in what is it, um, fifteen dollars a week cheaper than.
Than our current service, yeah.
So that would be a little bit saving there. Is it on the agenda or in the future for the board to formally vote? So that we can make sure the budget matches what for the cleaning services?
Uh, we can do it tonight if you, if you want.
If only we have the.
Oh, we don't have the stuff, sorry, so let's, next week. I mean, we have, uh, we, Eliza has forwarded it, we didn't have it.
Yeah, all, all the materials are available, um, they just haven't been shared with all the trustees, because I was waiting for um, you guys to decide when they belong on the agenda.
The factor in now and we'll have it on for.
Are there any other changes that anybody thinks for the general fund revenue or expense side? Add-ins, takeouts?
Uh, the question, uh, I don't know if this was discussed last week or not, um, how many, um, parking meter um, handheld devices?
One for now, I think we did. And three. And two um, parking enforcement oppositions and a higher pay. Figured if we're doing this, we gotta, we gotta come out guns blazing on enforcement. And making it easy for people to follow rule.
Not literally, of course.
So then, uh, tickets. Tax rate, we're still set at, you know, right, the two point four, it's half the vacuum levy. Um, if the board wants to aim to decrease it or increase it, I would need to know now before the public hearing to really work on.
I don't see how we, I don't see how we decrease it, um. But in order to accomplish those small bits, you would have to have a little bit more, yeah. So like, I don't know, like, to, what, what, what gets you, to what shift gets you toward, like?
Well, is there anything we can do that doesn't? Do you have any, any?
I think we've gone through everything, just that, I mean, Michelle.
And I, I think that until we've seen a year of parking meters and short-term rentals in action and until we know what those revenues are, it's hard to really budget appropriately. But next year, we'll be in a better place because.
Yeah, that's very true. And, and also the hope in enabling these new revenue sources is that we're able to back off some of the burden of these costs from residential taxpayers, that's the goal. Because it's worth, they're paying, our residents are paying for things they shouldn't be paying for. Alone.
The only, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's projected. Um, it's, it could be analyzing the projections, um, I'm pretty conservative and I use trends. So I'm comfortable with the rates of change that I've built in. General liability insurance, for example. I put in ten percent, Sarah came back and said it's nine percent, but they won't renew the cybersecurity, so you're gonna have to go to another vendor, who may be even more expensive than the ten percent that's already built in. So you save, the increase on everything but cyber liability is nine percent. And then who knows what the new cyber liability premium would be, um, so I don't know how to change some of my assumptions to have more revenue or less expenses aside from maybe electric, but the biggest consumers of electric are the water and sewer plants.
They're in different budget lines anyway.
General fund one is the streetlights and I learned this last budget cycle that the majority of that expenses went along the poles, it's not even on. Know if anybody would like to sit down and go through some other projections and, you know, I'd be open to it.
I, I think that you've, I think that you've optimized. As well as you can do, given what we know and what we don't know. Um. Could. Can we? Um. Can we ask you to calculate? Change in tax rate and we did, and we determine what we choose?
So if we went up from a two point four percent to a three percent?
Or two point six, like this, like just.
For conversation, because I have three percent in front of me.
Okay.
Three percent. It gives. Roughly ten thousand seven hundred. And a two hundred thousand dollars taxable assessed house. It's fourteen dollars more than what we talked about earlier. So, one eighty-six.
Night Tara.
You know, and then talk about if we have, if, if we can't find savings in electric on the sewer fund, you know, sewer might creep up a little bit, um.
So, so you need a direction tonight? So that you can figure out those things, the, I would, it would be my recommendation that we look at. Two point six and three and see, and given the changes we've put forward tonight, see where that gets us.
So if the CAD's three thousand. Um, and the cleaning is twenty-three hundred, so call that roughly five thousand. You'd be looking at. It'd be like two point seven. A two point seven percent increase.
I would prefer that we, it is as low as we can. Possibly be and still pay the bills. Um, go ahead.
No, just that, I mean, we also. We're talking through some. Um, there were some, you know, we had the, the executive session on employment, so.
And maybe that may be. Yeah, that may.
To talk about tonight?
Um. I just had a public discussion tonight, but I can follow up with you. During the day. But we had, we have some recommendations on modifications to what is in the budget.
Also, um, then on the general fund, Mayor, you had a bunch of questions, um, we want to run through them real quick.
While we're.
If we want to, or is everyone okay?
I mean, I, I feel like you adjust the questions that I had.
Okay.
The one question was the. I was asking whether we, the part-time, the two part-times in highway, if we were able to. Hire a single person, are we over, or I think we're over, what would be considered part-time at twenty, the twenty-four hours?
It wouldn't be twenty-four hours. So the question raised was. Could the two highway part-time positions be filled by a single part-time employee at twenty-four hours? Currently in the budget is a forty-hour. Summer help person, so it's forty hours for fourteen weeks. Also is a grass cutting person at eight hours a week for thirty-four weeks, so if you average that out. Um, to have them work yearly, we have sixteen hours to work with.
Okay.
At a rate of sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents. If you wanted a steady person, so that's two full days. At sixteen sixty-five an hour.
The man's age, yeah.
But not at twenty-four hours, we have to be at sixteen hours or the budget gets decreased, and if the wage needs to be higher than sixteen sixty-five. Um, then it would also need to be increased more. For two full days of work every week.
Um, and then the other question I had is what is non-chips, not potholes project, what's an example of that?
Highway requested, um, for paving jobs, like in a ten by ten, you know, section, if you come, he's comfortable doing up to that. Um, so if there needs to be repairs that are larger. Than a cold patch could fill, but not large enough for full street paving. Um, four thousand dollars to do some of that work, it's already out of fund balance already, it's not out of operating.
Yeah, I mean, those, those are things that I think should get bundled together and, and, and bid. For a bigger project rather than having our guys who don't do it. Very frequently.
Look, what, what about those situations when, you know, in worst winters, when there's something that. Pops up.
We're not gonna pave in the worst winter.
No, but you have to pay for paving for it at some point.
You fill it in the winter, you fill it with cold patch, but you're not paving in the winter.
You mentioned alive in our meeting, up to a ten foot by ten foot section of paving outside of chips or.
I mean, I.
We could take it out. And take it out of fund balance? It's, um, it's being, it would be no change, no savings to the operating budget or the taxes or anything like that, because you're already being funded from.
Okay, I, do you feel like you have the direction you need to get to the next round? Any further? Questions or comments from the board?
Yeah. Just, the public hearing is two weeks from today. We have to post it in the paper next week. Which means it has to be in by Friday.
So all the revisions have to be in by Friday?
No, the, the notice has to be. Part of that notice, the PTR also is, we, is including the salaries for elected officials.
Okay.
So if there's any proposed changes to that, just whatever that is, we would need to know that so that.
The current proposal is no raises for elected officials, any? Objection to that? So do you need it to be an affirmative vote?
No, I just need to know what, they have to include that, so I just need to make sure. That including it along this.
I was hoping not to have budget discussions next Wednesday, but I think based on the results of tonight's conversation. It's not ready. Um, the goal is then by next week. Whatever conversations we have, that will be the best version. That the board feels comfortable with going to public hearing.
Yep.
Can make changes. But because it's a public hearing, you want the residents to have a, a, a good understanding. It wouldn't be fair to have a lots of changes come after the public hearing, but we can, based on public hearing or based on. You know, if someone comes in and is like, oh, hey, this quote actually needs to be lowered or higher, those are valid reasons and. There's, we can make as many changes as we want. It's just past practice in the village as we haven't.
Yeah, I, and I think that that's a reasonable practice to maintain, I think it's a matter of us being very clear in our communication about. The whys. How, why we're getting, we're not, it's, we're not arbitrarily. Upping fees and. Here are the realities of what we need to fund, and this is a bridge year.
Would we want that sort of visual presentation to happen at the same time as the public hearing, like preemptively or?
Yes.
So, Michelle, maybe you and I could meet, um.
So, after she gets.
And you have changes that need to happen after this meeting, and we're gonna meet in on Wednesday. Really to have a presentation done, to be posted by Monday, that's not a lot of time, but need to work on details. After Wednesday night's meeting and then have that turned into a presentation. Right, the format of my spreadsheets don't change, but the numbers.
Yeah, would it be helpful for us to schedule another? Daytime session? If you need further discussion with us?
Um. Probably not at this point. The only. You know, this week's already done unless. We did it on Friday morning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I don't know.
Would, would that be helpful for you on Friday morning?
Well, we didn't know about the.
We have zoning in the morning, so two of us, two of us are off. Are out of commission.
And we can leave it Wednesday night, it's just the.
Just setting expectations.
Graphics and stuff, I don't know what, what kind of graphics you're looking to do, so I don't know what can actually. Be done if there's a lot of changes, like.
Right, well, I need a week to put it together, so, um, realistically.
But it doesn't need to be posted. It could be a part of the public hearing, presented at the public hearing.
That's right, it would be like a.
Yes.
Point that we. Show in the discussion and then we go through the budget.
Start making sound, Becky.
No, just. Everybody wears the timing of this and. I don't know if, you know, if we're gonna meet on Wednesday night, then do it, um. I don't know that you're gonna be afforded the opportunity to have to spend a week on that part of it. Probably gonna be less. It's gonna just be a couple, two or three days. Even meeting this Friday really is uncomfortable, because I mean, you have to decide everything tomorrow. You know, we have to go through, nothing's gonna get happened and get done.
And Michelle needs time to do the modeling.
Yeah, so. I have two members aren't here, it's. But Friday is not realistic, right?
What's, what's the date, the date of the public hearing again, sorry?
The twelfth.
Twelve.
Week from today.
Well, is it maybe you, can, can you mock it up without numbers?
Yeah.
Like the layout and then you could slot in final numbers?
Yeah, I think so.
Give you a head start. Because you know, that we know the concepts, we can talk together about concepts that we're trying to communicate.
That's right, so we could put that together in terms of what the goals were, what we were achieving with the budget. And then, um, you know. I don't even know if we go, have to go too much into the numbers, because that's what the actual budget does. But just having a like, this is where we were, this is where we're going, and this is why. That's right.
The deep dive into the numbers has been going on since.
Yeah, no, exactly, it's just deadly boring for most people.
And publicly, we've been doing it so all month.
Yeah.
This is probably the fourth or fifth meeting in a row where.
We had a lot of issues to solve.
Okay, are, is Michelle, are we good for Michelle this evening? Have everything we need for Michelle? Thank you, you have what you need from us.
As much as I'm gonna be able to get tonight.
Yes. Thank you very much, um, I would like to change the order of John, John Pap, um, is item six F. He's been sitting patiently for quite some time, um, I'd like to. Shift to that budget item, hi John.
Hi, good evening, how are you?
Uh, most of us know each other on the call, I'm Kathleen Foley, I'm the mayor, Laura Bosie is one of our trustees. Uh, Treat Woods and Eliza Starbuck is joining us by phone and one, one trustee is absent this evening, but you have who you need related to. Asking to do things in the village and. Getting, um, requests approved or not.
Sure.
We're all, we're all a little strung out right at the moment, hi, so tell us about who you are and, and what you're interested in doing in the village.
Well, uh, my name is John Pap, I'm in assistant location manager on the television show Severance, uh, which has a production title of Cold Harbor. Um, and we are filming, uh, this Friday night. On Route nine D, um, going through the Breakneck Ridge Tunnel. Uh, we'll be driving, uh, northbound and southbound, um, just on a, uh, what's called a process trailer. Um, which, um, at some point I can go over the diagrams, if you, if you'll allow me, I can share my, kind of have everything.
The clerk will enable you to do that.
Oh, great. Um, so we'll, we'll be, uh, having a, um, let's see, how do I, okay, start sharing?
John's got some additional. I think he's got diagrams or photos to show us.
I'm gonna make you a co-host.
Maybe.
We're trying to make him a co-host.
I can always hold my phone up to the screen.
You got it. Okay.
Great. Um, okay.
Good to go.
So let me start sharing. Okay, um, so, uh, these are, I'm sort of getting ahead of myself by, uh. Putting these up here, but let me just scroll down to, uh, the process trailer, which, um, as you can see is, uh. A tow rig, um, this one that, you know, I, I took from Google is, uh, obviously featuring a car. Um, for our shoot on Friday would be a motorcycle, um, rigged to the flatbed. Um, as you can see in the photograph. Um, this is roughly the size of our, you know, whole. Uh, rig minus, of course, the motorcycle. And, um, basically we employed this, uh, piece of equipment. So we can, you know, show our actor, you know, drive, riding a bike without actually, you know, risking their safety or, uh, things like that. Um, anyway.
Ruined it all for me.
Yeah, no, now I understand how it works.
Sorry, sorry, you should, uh, I, I can, I can, I'd be happy to spoil so much more aspects of, uh. So, uh, that evening, um, you know, we are gonna get started rigging our, uh, process trailer around. Uh, noon will be based out of the Duchess Manor, um, in Beacon. And then around, uh, probably six or seven PM, I think is when we'll start filming, when it's dark, um, it's supposed to be a nighttime. Um, exterior shot. So, um, because of the, you know, kind of size of this, um, process trailer. Spots along Route nine D, uh, within our filming footprint are rather difficult, uh, for the. Process trailer to reset, you know, it would, it's be akin to a, a school bus trying to do a U-turn. Um, so, given that we are traveling northbound and southbound on nine D. Um, we have determined that, um, the village of Cold Spring, uh, provides us with the, uh. Fastest, safest and, uh, closest, uh, points of reset. Um, so.
Can you pause for just one second to clarify a couple of things? So I'm assuming you have already had conversations with the sheriff's department and the town and the folks who need to clear you on. Nine D, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, we have, uh.
Okay, so you have your authorization to film on the highway?
Yes, and we'll have state troopers accompanying us, um, and performing the intermittent traffic control during that period. Make sure everything is safe and secure, um, so we, we have their thirty-three F permit, um, granting us, uh, the permission to. Do our driving work. Um, so. For the reset point, um, what we were thinking, um, is as we're coming down. Nine D south, you know, we would e- eventually come onto River Street or Fair Street. Um, and I think, you know, what we wanted to do obviously is not kind of. Take our process trailer through the, the village of Cold Spring through, you know, the streets willy-nilly. Um, and this municipal lot here next to River View, um, would potentially accommodate us. Um, if we're allowed to use it, um, what we would do is, um. You know, we would pull our process trailer into, uh, the municipal lot from the. Uh, basically the top entrance there. Um, it would pull in and basically back out. Across River Road into this residential lot and we've made, we've already made, uh. Oh, sorry.
That's not gonna work, that private property across the way. Is not gonna be happy about that, I thought you wanted to turn around in the parking lot.
Well, I think that was one of the options that they, um, had posited, I'm sure we can, we can try.
That's a, that's a no-go, that, that, um, that residential, um, development has a, gets a huge impact of truck traffic. And they're, they're just not gonna like that. And, and also they've had damage in their parking lot from trucks, and so it will not be well received.
Sure, uh, that's, uh, that's absolutely understandable, we can, um, uh, adjust from there. Um, the, you know, the, the, just to clarify, within the, the municipal lot. Um, it, it looks like, from what I thought, we would be able to do a full U-turn in the lot. Um, however, it's, uh, the, the, unless we filed for and obtained permission to remove the guardrails, which I'm, I'm not about to ask for that. Um, you know, it, it, it's almost too narrow a spot for it to turn around, so. We would have accompanying, accompanying, excuse me, state troopers, uh, with us. Um, basically to make the roads safe, so we can kind of, um, because basically all we need to do is reverse. Our trailer so we can get back on nine D, um, as quickly as possible. Um, so our thinking was utilizing this municipal lot to do that, um, it also provides us a safe spot. Uh, in, just in case, you know, adjustments need to be made, you know, a, 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 you know, lighting fixture needs a quick lamp adjustment. Um, and it, you know, sort of prevents us from, like I said, basically going through the surface streets, which. Uh, Madam Mayor, you and I discussed, you know, earlier, uh, today, the. uh, Madam Mayor, you and I discussed, you know, earlier, uh, today, the, the, um, how it, you know, would not be probably the greatest thing for it to make a series of left turns through the residential areas. To reset itself.
Be mindful that Fair Street is a residential area. There, there are houses all along Fair Street. Um, across from the park at the end and, and this residential area. So we are impacting, this would be impacting a residential neighborhood already. What, what concerned me of, of looping through the village was having two turns on much narrower streets and downshifting on the turns, et cetera. Um, but now that you're talking about pulling in and backing out, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a different scenario than driving through. Are you, are you proposing, do you need lighting? What did you just say about lights? On the truck?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That was just, just for example, you know, i- i- in case adjustments need to be made because we're, we have cameras mounted on our, um, on the tow vehicle that are, that are filming ahead, um, of the, you know, the actor, the stunt double that's on, um, the motorcycle while we're filming.
Ruined it again. You just ruined another piece. Stunt double.
Well, no, sure, it'll be, it'll be an actor, uh. But stunt doubles are actors as well. Um, they, you know, just perform in secret.
How many times are you, would this happen, that you would have to come back and do the U-turn and back around?
Uh, in, indeterminate amount of times, um, we are planning on getting as many takes as we possibly can, um, between, you know, our, our, we'll, we'll have some work on our process trailer, uh, which should take a, you know, there are four shots I believe we're trying to achieve. Um, and then for up until midnight, which is when, you know, our, um, I believe our our filming is set to, you know, be done by midnight, um, and some of that will also involve, um, a camera, you know, a, a follow vehicle, which is what we have, which is a much less robust. You know, it's just a car with a camera mounted to it and, you know, a motorcycle, which will be free driving. Um, sort of to get the, the wide shot of the motorcycle.
Questions from other trustees?
Um, so just, just so we understand, um, they're coming into this municipal lot and are they doing a U-turn in the lot or are they doing like a back into it and, and like turning around that way?
Well, I, 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 I don't believe the U-turn is gonna be, uh, physically possible. Um, so I believe they'll just, I, I mean, this would, I guess, require your permission if they were to pull in and then I guess do a K-turn into River Road rather than back all the way into, you know, that residential lot. Um, you know, I think if we backed out potentially at an angle, we could reset ourselves, you know, without encroaching upon that, uh, residential lot, but unfortunately, if the, the, in actual U-turn where they drive all the way around the lot, um, up until today, I thought that was possible, but it sounds like that would be impossible, uh, for our, um, purposes.
Um, any, any entrance to any degree on that private lot is a, um, as a non-starter. So I had conversation with, um, Jimmy Eli today who owns Riverview, um, because obviously it's Friday night, um, in spring. He is open, he is open to this. He was, he's a bit concerned about the mayor's park lot being blocked as well, but, um, he is, he is open to the concept if, um, the village and its residents benefit. So I thought that was a generous, generous, um, expression by Mr. Eli. Um, tell me about the lot being opened, uh, the lot being needed along the field.
So that, um, I basically, when I made this diagram, I kind of opened it up to as much, uh, as I, you know, a- as much as we could potentially have, uh, that lot would be used exclusively so the folks that would be kind of stationed in this municipal lot, um, would be able to park their cars, um, in the mayor's park lot. Um, you know, I, I don't foresee it being more than, than ten cars. Um, so, you know, if it's a situation where we could have a portion of the lot, you know, we'll, we'll obviously defer to, to your, your preferences there. Um, if there's, you know, we'll, we'll take whatever's available, if, if any of it's available. Um, and, you know, obviously if it's not, then that's, that's not a, that won't harm us, uh, we'll just have to, you know, park in a different lot, um, along Route ninety.
Oh, oh, your, your folks will have to park in a different lot along ninety.
The, the, yeah, the crew cars will, yeah.
Little starting point, little starting point is probably, yeah, yeah.
And so logistically for us, we'd have to have our police put up signs or they would, like, how, we, we would have to notify people to get your cars out by a certain time from the municipal lot and then make a notification, you know, and then kind of close it off for access.
I believe that John was, John was proposing that the company would provide cones and blocking, yep.
Yep, we can actually absolutely do that. We, we do that all the time, you know, as soon as we would have access to start coning off the lot, we would have a gentleman there, um, who would basically, you know, cone the lot, cone the lot off and, and very nicely inform folks that, um, the lot is being used for, you know, private event.
So a couple of, a couple of things to bear in mind. So we, the village does have, um, a filming permit. This is not filming itself in the village, but it is an ancillary, a supporting use for filming. There is a loss of revenue represented by the closure of the municipal lot. Um, the meters won't be being filled and John, if I'm honest, you've just sat with us for an hour and a half and listened to how we're struggling with every penny. Um, so this is an asset for us. Um, I think it's really cool that you're choosing the Hudson Highlands for your location. This clearly has value. I'm wondering, I'm gonna shoot high and see where we go. I'm, would you be willing to pay five thousand?
Um, given the importance of this lot to our, uh, whole, uh, driving shot, um, I don't believe that that is an outrageous figure. Um, I think that's something that we can definitely work with. Um, so, you know, I will, um, I'm not the decider when it comes to the permits, but I, I honestly, I feel like that is something that, uh, we could absolutely make happen.
Um, uh, that would be amazing. It would cover our, our revenue loss on parking. Um, I think the, the larger issue here is what we are asking for Fair Street residents, um, is a sacrifice, um, and a, and a disruption of their neighborhood. Um, but if it allows us to expand services in some way or in another, um, I hope that, that Fair Street folks would be willing to, to, um, participate in this joint venture for six hours on Friday night.
Can I maybe make, um, is there any way, John, to reduce the light? Um, the lights that would be, um, from the vehicles, like if they're, um, I'm just imagining the headlights kind of hitting people a number of times. Do you have any strategies that you could use to limit as much as possible the lights? I think that would help reduce impact.
That is a discussion I'll have to have with our, uh, electrical department. By the time our process trailer gets to Fair Street, our shot will be long since, you know, we won't be
Oh, okay.
anymore. So, uh, however, I'm not entirely sure if they, you know, have all the, you know, the bells and whistles still going, even though they're, you know, because I, I, I would just need to discuss with them and basically formulate a plan where, you know, we would, uh, dim the lights as much as possible, um, for whatever's safe, you know, as soon as they, they cut the shot. Um, but, you know, uh, light pollution is something that we would, you know, that's obviously very disruptive, especially late at night. Uh, we want to cut down on that and, uh, what we can also do is typically when we're filming in New York City, um, we will just type up and distribute a what's called a resident letter, just a flyer, basically saying, hey, between the hours of, you know, this time and this time, um, you know, our company will be filming here. We provide a point of contact, which will likely be me. Um, and it just sort of, you know, allows the residents to, to contact, you know, someone from our team. Um, let us know if there's, there are any issues or anything like that. So i- i- if you'd like, we can type those up and have you.
Fantastic. We would also, um, well, first of all, the, the board needs to vote this decision.
Right, right, of course.
Talk for a moment, um, that would be immensely helpful. Um, and we could also make sure that we're communicating out via the, the avenues, we, our social media and the, and the website. So, um, thoughts from, from board members, questions for John? I, I would also point out that just as a point of balance, that, that is the, people are pulling in and out of the municipal lot.
Yeah.
Regularly with headlights. Anyway, I think your concern was the, the, the lighting on the, on the structure, on the truck. Okay. Um, questions, concerns? Um, clerk, that it, it seems we would need some sort of permitting mechanism. Would it be appropriate for, for us to use the, the film, to ask John to complete the film permit so we're sure we have the insurance that we need, et cetera? Or a separate letter of communication if the, if the board approves?
Trying to think of past instances and I guess would.
That, that makes the most logical sense to me.
It's this Friday, correct?
Correct.
Yes, use the film part, I mean, no sense in reinventing.
Yeah.
Or inventing something.
Um, would someone like to make a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to accept, um, at the rate of five thousand dollars, uh, for the permit um, to use the municipal lot and um, are we including Fair Street, I mean, the, the mayor's park lot as well?
Go ahead, Laura.
Well, I would say at least the far end, if it's kind of ten spaces at the, because it doesn't make a difference to you, John, if they're away from the village or close to the village. So, at least.
So twelve, is twelve spaces sufficient?
I think twelve spaces is plenty.
Twelve spaces of, of the mayor's park lot, um, uh, so that's the motion.
Second? Second, by Laura, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Fantastic. So we'll talk with you tomorrow. I'm in, Laura and I are, am in meetings in the morning, but the clerk is available for helping with permit.
Great, yeah, I'll be, uh, I should be up there in the late, uh, morning, early afternoon. I've basically been, um, living in Cold Spring. It's a lovely village. I love it.
So glad to hear it. We'll come and say hello at Village Hall in person.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, and I mean, if there's anybody that is right for autographs, why just let us know, we can let folks know.
Of course, absolutely. Alrighty, uh, take care.
Thank you for being patient. Good night, John.
Take care.
Okay, um, we have a couple of memorandums of understand, one is a memorandum of understanding and one is a memorandum of agreement. First is the, um, Cold Spring Film Society, speaking of filming, um, it's the usual season of, um, summer outdoor films at the waterfront. Of note, there is a correction that needs to be made in the dates. It says July eighty-ninth. Should be July eighth or ninth. July eight.
July eighth, just be.
Um, the, like, this is no different than any previous year, the liability insurance is at place, et cetera. I'm delighted to have the Film Society back. I'd like to make this motion myself to approve, um, the memorandum. Oh, I know it's authorizing me to sign it. I can't. Someone else do it.
I'm making a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the twenty-twenty-three MOU with the Cold Spring Film Society.
Second. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
None opposed. Um, I'll be happy to sign it. Okay, so next is the memorandum agreement of agreement with the firehouse, um, the fire company, uh, it's for, uh, covers what we pay for, what they pay for service, how, how payment is divided among us and Phillips Town and Nelsonville standard contract to, um, a total of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, village will pay Cold Spring Fire Company, one hundred and thirty-six thousand four dollars and twenty cents payable and two equal payments of sixty-eight thousand, two dollars and ten cents for fire protective services in the village of Cold Spring and Nelsonville. Any discussion? None. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to authorize me to sign?
Sure, I'd like a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the MOA between the village of Cold Spring and the village of Cold Spring Fire Company, number one.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Okay. Um, all right. Um, discussion of off-street parking requirements for short-term rentals, this is one of the outstanding items that we need to make a decision on so that, um, we can finish code and get it before the public. So the, the ad hoc committee, um, debated three options related to parking in short-term rentals. One was no off-street parking requirement. Two was requiring one off-street space for an STR permit. And three was, um, requiring one off-street space per STR bedroom in a property. Um, the committee was divided, um, between one and two, no parking and one parking per bedroom and the compromise they reached um, was n- number two as a proposal, um, but it's for, for the board to decide. Um, discussion.
Um, what what happened to the idea of allowing for parking waivers? Was that, would that be included with the one off-street parking spot or is that, was that thrown out?
That applies, parking waivers apply only to the B-one. So areas outside of the B-one, properties outside of the B-one would not qualify.
Right, but if we're writing a law about STRs, could we not allow it to be qualified?
I suppose you could. It's not something I would be, um, in favor of. It's a, it's a, a mechanism for our, for business owners on Main Street to address parking shortages. And this is a different, it's a different animal.
Well, what's the purpose of requiring an off-street parking spot if it is not to address a parking shortage?
If it does not address a, so, so what we have is a, and this is my view, others may have different opinions. We're talking about um, many of these being located there, it is allowable in under the current draft, allowable in residential districts and, oh, and the B-one. What is, what is now the B-one? For owner occupied hosted units. Um, I guess my thinking is that it's appropriate in a, in a business district, but we're talking, where we're talking about residential neighborhoods, I don't, I don't see it as appropriate in residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, vote a waiver.
Yeah. I, that's my view. Others may feel differently.
No, I, I actually agree with that.
Laura?
Um, I mean, the waiver would operate the same as no, no requirement, right? Like in
In effect.
In effect, except that there's like an, add a kind of financial.
There's revenue.
But is the revenue, I mean, at some point, where, where does the revenue does the revenue cost too much, um, in terms of impact? Um, a- and I, I feel like we're it's a privilege, it's a privilege, not a right, and we're, we're tasked with protecting neighborhood character. I just, I don't, I don't see it as a viable option under this scenario.
I just, you know, given the parking plan that's going into place and will likely expand to all neighborhoods, it would address any issues with shortages of parking spots, given that we're only allowing forty permits to begin with. It's, you know, forty parking spots we're talking about throughout the entire village. They probably won't be all concentrated on one block. So I don't see it causing a real crisis. I don't see a problem that we're addressing by doing this. Um, and I think that we've, you know, knocked out and hosted, which, you know, if you look at past STR numbers, you know, it's been forty-five, fifty, at the peak, I think I saw eighty um, STRs posted. Um, S T Rs posted at one time in the village, but we're knocking out all the unhoseded, so we don't know what proportion that is. Um, we're. Limiting that number of all the, all year hosts to only forty permits. Um, we're putting in a parking plan which will protect resident parking from visitor traffic. Um, we've knocked.
But that, that protected parking is protected for for residents.
Right, well, so then your guests can't even park on the street anyway. They're gonna have to find somewhere to park. I don't know where they would, but it will be their problem.
The waiver, the waiver doesn't give them a parking space. It just says that buying a non-existent parking space. You're paying a fee for a parking space you cannot provide, but I guess it's not like it then gives them. Uh, another option, and like a waiver to then use.
That's right. It's it's revenue we're leaving on the table, um. And and we've knocked out shared driveways, I believe, so that's no longer, although I don't know how many shared driveways are gonna be permit.
So, so we've gone in a, we've gone in a direction that's, that is. Separate from, the the first question in front of us is. Do we require? Do we not require off-street parking? Do we require one pace, space per permit off-street parking? Do we require one off-street space per bedroom, separate and apart from a waiver system? That's the first decision.
Well, all of what I was just speaking of was in favor of not requiring a. Uh, off-street parking spot, or if you require one allowing for a, um, waiver. Option, which doesn't sound like, uh. Other board members support, so that that's, that was why I was speaking of those points. And we've also knocked out single evening rentals, so we're, we're chopping out pieces here, there and everywhere, and my point being. That, um, you know. We're putting up a lot of guardrails everywhere, and I think it's a little bit overkill personally.
I think it's better, um. I mean. I, I appreciate what your, your sentiment about it. I just think that, um. The more guardrails, the better, and if we find that we, that things can change and we don't need things and things don't work, we can always. Adapt and adjust.
With a code change.
With a code change. I'm not saying it's easy. I'm just saying it's not impossible, but I would start with. Um. Minimally, I think that the compromise that the S C R committee came up with of, uh, requiring one. Parking spot per. Um, but rental.
Um, one off-street parking space.
Yes, sorry, that's what I was trying to articulate, um, is reasonable. I am not for. Um, not having any requirement. And per bedroom seems. A little.
My fear with, my fear with per bedroom is unintended consequence. My fear with per, per bedroom. Is the conversion of yards, backyards, front yards to parking areas, um, and that to me is. A giant character day, character hit for the village, um.
Why wouldn't that?
Why I think that the.
With with one, one parking off-street spot, though. I mean, if if you had to have one, then you could just. Put one in your backyard.
I think that it is, that is a risk, the the one being able to to. Provide one off-street parking, that that scenario is a risk, but less likely. Um, less likely, given a one-vehicle requirement, and I think it's a compromise between two extremes. Laura's thinking deeply.
I'm like, thinking of houses at the, you know, like, I mean. Houses that I can think of that don't have parking, also don't have any way to get into the backyard, like, there's nowhere to put the car. Right, like, the lot is, the house is, right, is covering up the whole thing. There are probably exceptions, but like, that's what I'm imagining in my head. I'm also trying to imagine, like. You know, if you have one parking space. And you. And and someone, and you have a guest come, you're probably gonna, then you give them your parking space, and then you put your car on the street, but. You can, because you have a resident permit, and so there will be that kind of overflow anyway, but. We've kind of had that as part of the system, that residents will be parking on their own streets. Um, and then otherwise, then, yeah, people are using the limited public parking overnight of. Northern and, um, for the places where where we have to designate. Public parking under the state enabling legislation, and there's the municipal lots. I mean, parking. We are working, we are working to solve parking issues, but the parking, parking shortage is not going to ever not be an issue in the village. Are you getting, trying to get my attention?
I was gonna offer a suggestion.
Go ahead.
Why don't I kind of look at a hybrid of what everybody's talking about, where you off where. You write into the code that just one off, you require that one off-street parking spot. Or if that, if it's a building where that's not available, you can pay a two hundred and fifty dollar fee, or whatever the fee is for in lieu of a parking spot. So you kind of, can you? If you have the off-street parking, that's kind of a bonus. If you don't. You know, instead of not being able to get a permit, then you have to pay for it to have.
Okay, so say that, say that, talk me through that one more time. Please.
The requirement is one off-street parking spot or. Pay a fee in lieu of pay a parking waiver.
Which is what Liza was driving at.
Right, so it's kind of, so how did you do it?
Just think of it this way, it, between, you know, I've counted all the houses without driveways, it's, it's like. A proper third between the tracks and ninety in the central lower village. Um. So. If. We, we've. I just would hate to get to a point where we've got like forty permits up for, you know, people apply for. And only ten people can apply for them, because. You know, we've cut out all the unhoseded, which I totally agree with, and we've, you know, excluded. A third of the entire village, because they don't have driveways, like, suddenly.
It's not about excluding the entire village, it's about it being. A right, I mean, a, a privilege, not a right.
We're unprivileged, we're unprivileged a third of the village. Use whatever you word you want to use, but like, you know. Come, come this year, we get this permit system on, and we only have ten permits, I mean.
It's kind of the point, though.
Yeah, if if S T Rs are, are keeping it really small is the goal, which I, I know we want to keep it very small and limited, but like, I didn't know. Like, are we looking to shrink it from, like, do we have a major problem? Like, we've had some complaints from a few, but it. I just didn't know we were overrun by S T Rs at this point.
Not lately, but I think what we're all looking to is. Future. Right, we're, we're all, we're looking, we're looking, we're wanting to create an environment now that maintains limit. I can, so, so Jeff explaining it in different language makes me more amenable to that idea, but I think that. Two hundred and fifty, right now, the zoning code. And the fee table set a waiver at two hundred and fifty. Um, is that an appropriate amount? Does that? I mean, maybe, maybe the number needs to be. Higher. To, to communicate the value, right? But it would, that would be a, that would be a new fee that would have to be added to the schedule and added into the code, if we were to do it that way.
I mean, on the, um, we don't have overnight. Charges. Um. In our parking, but, but we.
But till nine P M, right?
But till nine P M, so, I mean, you can't imagine that if someone is parking, if they can't park in the driveway, they're gonna have to park in one of the paid spaces. And then the, the visitor, and then they'll be paying. You know, they'll be paying. Or, you know, well, yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying that's, that's an additional revenue of that. Has been coming, right? Like, the waiver doesn't give them free parking. They also are gonna have to pay for parking. So that's good.
Unless they are able to capture one of the designated public spaces in the twenty percent of the district.
True.
So, here's the thing, we've, we've been talking about this for a year. We need to.
You mean, isn't the last?
Yeah, tonight, we've been talking about everything for.
Yeah.
An eternity, um. We just, we need to make a decision on it, um. I, I can, I can understand the. Compromise that Jeff puts forward, but I would like, if that is the direction of the board would like to go, I'd like to see the number. The fee increased, so that it's more meaningful. Five hundred. Um. Feel like you're about to say something.
No, I'm, I'm just, I, I mean. Um. There should definitely be a requirement, so I think that's. Is that we've already been minimalizing to that, right?
That there should be a requirement for.
A, a parking, for an off.
Off-street parking requirement?
Yes.
Whether it comes in the form of a waiver or a.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So, then I would agree with you that that number. If, if there was a, in lieu of a parking spot number, it should be much higher than two hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know what that number is, but we have to decide.
We get to decide.
Yeah.
And it will go to public hearing and we'll get feedback on it. I would, I mean, for the purposes of, of getting it before the public, I would propose five hundred. Laura's.
And, uh. How much is the? Just so I have the numbers. No, how much is the, um, the permit? Your permit? Oh, yeah. We haven't talked through those numbers, no.
Thought it was two fifty itself.
Say that again?
I think it's two fifty.
The application fee?
I believe so.
I think so, too, Liza. I just am not getting my eye on the.
Uh, application fee. Would be, uh, a hundred dollars, and the permit fee. Would be, actually, they, they raised it to seven hundred dollars for a hosted. And we dropped it to one twenty-five for the single use. So, seven hundred, but a hundred dollars for the applications, a total of eight hundred dollars to get your permit. If you can get through the whole process.
So you're asking to operate a business. In the village out of your home. Right, so it's not. It's not just. It's not just a parking waiver. It's a commercial parking waiver.
Yeah.
In effect, I'm comfortable with, with that amount, uh, with the. As a, as a proposal to the public. In the public hearing.
And when you put it like that, to be honest, I feel like five hundred is probably a tad slow.
So what is your alternate proposal?
Um, I say, why don't we start with seven fifty and hear from people, what they have to say.
Hey, 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 I think that it's, that's high, I mean, like. All the other businesses have to do two fifty, you know, in the business district, where it's more congested.
That, that number, I think, is. Bananas in the business district, and that's something that we should look at in the, in the parking, I mean, the fee schedule. It doesn't, it doesn't amount to anything.
Well, we've never, we've always, we've often discussed how that number is arbitrary anyway, because you don't get anything for it. It.
So you're.
We've discussed shifting that into a different model entirely, and yeah, it should be more potentially. But, um, but.
You're arguing, you're arguing that as a revenue. Uh, when you, when you first raised the question of, of. Charging a waiver, you raised it in the context of revenue.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more comfortable with the five hundred dollar number. I just think seven fifty on top of eight hundred is a lot.
Let's first determine the amount, so, so we have a proposal on the table for. Seven hundred and fifty. No, no, we're, we're, it's only four of us, and it's, we're divided.
Um, I'm more in favor of five hundred.
Okay. So we have, we do not have consensus on that. We need to find consensus on it.
Places of a tie up in the man to pass the break vote.
Then the mayor casts her vote for seven fifty to go before the public as a proposal. Thank you, clerk. Um, and. Are we landing on one off-street parking space per permit?
Yeah.
In the form of either a physical space or a waiver.
Right, worth that. Yeah.
And then to be determined the logistics of. Confirming the space.
Yes.
Part of the.
That'd be part of the inspection. Okay, so, so we will provide that to Jen, who will finalize the text. Provide her text to the one thirty-four folk, to make sure we're aligned there. And then bring back to the board a final draft that we can. Use to schedule a public hearing. Okay, thank you. Get that off, off the table. Um, okay, approve a quote from Harper Haines for valve inspections. We actually approved this, this valve replacement. Some time ago, but, um, an inspection needs to, needs to be done before they can undertake the work, um, and the cost, this is a. Harper Haines is sole source, meaning there is no competition to bid with, um. So, what the, the proposal before us is to approve two thousand eight hundred and two dollars for the necessary. Inspection of. One valve tech. For raw water. No, no, it's not the valve tech. We're not inspecting the tech. The tech is inspecting the valve for raw water. Um, so, uh, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, next is an easy one. The Putnam History Museum would like to set up a table in front of Village Hall as they did last year for. Um, Cold Spring and Bloom, we pulled the benches back and they were able to sort of have the, the center of their visual scavenger hunt. Go from villager hall, from village hall. I really, I thought it was really great. Um, so I propose to approve that. I move to approve it.
Second.
All in favor? I. Discussion on dock lights, we're almost ready for, we need one more. Sheet of information from James, so I'm gonna move to table that. Second. All in favor? We addressed the municipal parking lot. Minutes one twenty-five. Laura, you are correct in your catch. Jeff has adjusted the minutes with said adjustment. Um, do I have a motion related to the minutes one twenty-five?
Uh, Jeff, were those the minutes I, I sent you comments on today?
Oh. Now, those will be on next week's agenda.
Okay, right. Oh, those are the ones I wasn't there for, sorry.
Oh, yes, Eliza's department was absent, so you have made a motion, you have seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
I, and Eliza abstains. Bills, who's got the batch?
Uh, I make a motion to approve, uh, Bill's batch number six eight six two in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars, one hundred sixty-one. Twenty-six thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
I, Alatta Tree Pit Garden.
Yeah, uh, so just a quick, um, update and proposal, the. Um, tree pit committee met, that's Jen Zwarick, um, from the tree, uh, permission board. Advisory board, um, the Main Street Committee Chair, Erin Murphy, and. Erin Muir, who is, um, managing the tree pit gardens. Um, they would like to do a, um, community volunteer mulch day for all the tree pits on Main Street on April eleventh. Tuesday. Um, they requested two to three mulch drop spots on Main Street, so, um. In past years, the village sort of blocked off a parking spot in front of Village Hall and dumped there, but they're. Asking if we could do one further up the hill as well, and maybe one further down, so that it's not as hard to wheelbarrow mulch around. And um we've. Asked to use the mulch from the highway department for this purpose, which will save the village some funds.
So Bugsy would would bring it to Main Street for you?
Yep, and in his dump truck, he'd dump it in the different locations, and then the volunteers would move it to the tree pits and clean all the tree pits up.
We actually had it on the sidewalk. In front of Village Hall last year, didn't we, or was it in in the?
It was, it was in the parking spot in front of Village Hall.
Okay, so we just need to make sure we need, what are the hours?
Um, so I think that they are looking to do it from.
Just as I'm thinking about shift change with the police officers, we need to make sure we have enough space for two vehicles there.
Oh, um, well, we have a spot across the street and it probably wouldn't take up all of that space at all. It really only takes like the spot of one parking spot.
So maybe put it across the street, although you could, you could block the U on Fair Street.
It's fine. It was no problem last year.
Okay.
Right, last.
Put it down at the end or something.
We did it from nine to two, I think.
Oh, that's between shift changes anyway.
Yeah, this year they were looking to do it maybe a little bit later, so held in volunteer students could help um in the afternoon, so they were hoping to end it at like. Four.
Okay, so so eight noon and. Four are the, no, is that right? Eight, four and. Midnight. Eight, four and midnight are the shift changes.
Done by four.
That's great. And then what what other spot are they proposing?
Um, so up towards uh Saint Mary's Swan. So that they would be wheeling downhill and then probably down towards. Like Stone Street. You could do it in maybe the fifteen-minute parking spot.
Oh. I'm fine with that. I mean, it's it's people who are volunteering their time to beautify the village. I'm okay with it. Um.
Or is it dated this?
Eleven.
April eleventh, it's a Tuesday.
Do we need a vote on it? Or is the three of the four of us saying I'm okay with it? Good. I make a motion to approve the proposal from the tree pit pit committee, the tree pit group.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we have reached the end of our agenda. We have, we have one, potentially two members of the public still on the line. Any public comment from, I think, what is John, might be John and Charlotte?
Oh, no, it's Jesse.
Nastirious, Jesse.
Uh, no comment except. Uh, I'm excited that that the filming is happening.
Okay, as a. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I would make a motion to adjourn in that case.
Second.
Good night, Eliza.
Good night, everybody.